Okay, and all commissioners are here by Zoom or do we know about Mr. Davis and Mr. Sweeney?
Mr. Davis, Commissioner Davis is absent with prior approval.
Right.
Um, Commissioner Sweeney, I believe said eight o'clock.
Okay, so he's in route. Very good. Okay, all right. Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. I'll ask you this time if you have a cellphone to please silent it in respect to the decorum of our meeting. And now we ask everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Our future meetings will include the planning commission will meet on Thursday, December 9th this week. At 7:00 PM here in the town office. The storm water utility advisory committee meeting will occur on December 16th at 7:00 PM here in the town. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Via Zoom only. The town council will again meet on January 3rd pending a modification. At 7:30 PM via Zoom as well as here in person at the town office. Mr. Mayor, is there a modification you're hoping to see related to the January meeting?
Yes, I'd like to propose that we have the meeting the second week on Tuesday, the 11th. Short staff. The third is just too close to of. The event of New Year and just to get a running start out of Tuesday, the 11th.
Terrific. Okay.
They have one staff member. I'm sorry.
I pushed.
Okay, I apologize. I can move the meeting to Tuesday. I recommend you move it to Tuesday, the 11th. We were short-staffed and the third is right on the heels of New Year's and that's too close and we got. People are on vacation a lot during that time and just to get a running start in the year, Tuesday, the 11th.
Terrific. As well as do we need to vote from the board or can we just do that as a collective approval?
You can just do a unanimous consent.
Okay, very good. All right. So, Mr. Sweeney, good evening. Welcome. So, Mr. Sweeney has just joined us. Well done. So, board members, proposals come forward to see the meeting moved to the 11th of January on Tuesday, the 11th. Anybody have any concerns about that?
No, I like, I like that.
Very good. Mr. Sweeney, are you okay with that? Moving the next town meeting to the 11th of January instead of in the first week. Great. Okay, Mr. Burns, very good.
Thank you.
As well as myself, definitely approve. We have consensus. Thank you, Ms. Willetts.
Thank you.
So, moving from there, we now turn to pardon me, the minutes from the November 1st meeting. Anybody have any modifications or enhancements they want to see related to that? November 1st, related to those meeting minutes, pardon me.
Ms. President, I had one on page six of our agenda packet. Specifically, agenda item number five. Pertaining to the sewer connection at 502 East Main Street. I would ask that if we could modify it about halfway down. There's a sentence that begins, "It is the intention of the town to provide..." dot, dot, dot. Okay. Um, I was wondering if we could remove that entire section since we didn't really speak to it that evening. If we're to keep that in there. I feel that if we include that information, it's not correct. So, we'd either, neither correct it or. Or just remove it entirely.
Delete it. Okay.
As, as it states, it was, um. Explain that the town's responsible for that due to the sewer lines being moved. However, I know we discussed that the sewer lines. Those two properties in question were never connected to the town sewer to begin with.
No, that's, that's not correct either statement.
Okay, so Ms. Willetts, could you clarify? So, we have.
So, it is, so it is the intention or it's currently the intention of the town to provide certain improvements. It within the town bound or within the property owner's boundary along that main line. So, the intention of that agreement is to install a sewer main along 140. That would connect to the property line as well as connect to the building. And the town would be responsible for all that as well as repairing the asphalt. So, that, that sentence is actually correct. That is the intention.
So, 500 East Main Street and 502 East Main Street were connected to the town sewer.
There's no proof to say that they're not. We have conducted all the tests, all the dye tests. There's no evidence to show that it's not. We just don't know which line that it may or may not go to. And instead of spending tens and thousands of dollars of digging up roadway and private land. It was, it was the option to install these lines. To save the town money and save the time, save time and move this along.
Why am I remembering this? Does anyone else?
There was discussion that it was never connected, but we've done a lot of tests. We've done a lot of dye tests. We've done a lot of research. There's no evidence to say that it's not connected, but where it is, we don't know.
Okay.
So, in an effort to move this along and save the town, as I said, tens of thousands of dollars digging up private land and roadway. This was the simpler solution for both properties.
All right, it's, it's still, I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me if we have a contract stating that. Property owners will not seek to be reimbursed for any. Sewer fees that they've already paid for.
Well, right, we don't have a contract with 500, 502.
Well, we have one for 500, the word is in there and the 502, I'm pretty sure.
I'm not saying, it could possibly not be connected, but I'm not saying that it's, there's no definitive evidence that it's not and there's no definitive evidence that it is.
But when you put a new one in, it will be definitely.
Correct. Right.
Wherever goes before will be this time.
Right.
Okay, so am I the only one remembering that differently?
Mr. Ritz, sort of yes, sort of no. I know what you're saying. It felt as if the gist of it was it had not been identified that there was any connection. I don't recall there being an absolute response on that. That's, that's kind of where I'm going. However.
I don't remember.
I, yeah, I think it's practical, the, the staff leaving the door open for that and the language we're using. However, is this something you'd want to come back to in our January meeting so we could check the. The language that was used in the November 1st meeting?
Sure.
Okay, so to that end, would you be willing to accept the minutes as presented with the understanding this would be reviewed?
I, I can live with that. Yeah, I had nothing else. That was anything that jumped out at me. The rest of the minutes broke cave.
Okay, barring other modifications from other commissioners. So, okay, Mr. Burns says nothing. Mr. Sweeney, do you have anything? I don't have anything for this. Okay, so again, so with that contingency, is that, would that satisfy you? So, we can come back.
That'll work.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? With the contingency that. Agenda item number five, the language related to agenda item number five will be reviewed in our. January 11th meeting.
I think there's a simpler solution that we just go back and listen to it tomorrow and I can send an excerpt out to everybody from that meeting.
Well, that's what I'm looking for. Yes, but I just, if we're going to formally accept the meeting minutes just to get the ball rolling. I mean, as opposed to leaving it out there in the ether. I mean.
No, no, just so that you don't have to wait till the January meeting for, for the update of what was actually. Said because we can go back, Ms. Nail can go back and listen to the minutes tomorrow and write it up word for word, which I'm pretty sure this is what it is, but you know, things do get missed.
So, I guess what I'm getting at procedurally, the board has to approve the minutes and accept them. That's.
I thought you were.
Well, we're trying to, but we're, we're in discussion a little bit early. So, but that's kind of where we're going, I hope. Okay, so is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Sweeney's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Town staff has just offered that they will review the item on Wednesday and they will share their, out the results with staff. Any further discussion? Yeah, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent. Okay, great. I think we're all on the same page. But thank you, everybody. Moving forward, we turned over the deputy for our police report. Good evening, Deputy.
Good evening. How is everybody? Deputy White House, Frederick County Sheriff's Office. This is the November 2021 report. Overall, kind of a slow month, which I guess is good, right? So, in the first page there, just some trainings and some recertifications that myself and. Deputy Ahal had to, I've had to attend. Second sheet, not a whole lot either. 121 calls for service in town with one arrest. Traffic stops were 39. Down at the bottom there, there's the damage to the waypoint sign. Once again, this is the one that's down by 601. West Main, the Doughboy Building. There's that waypoint sign that was up there. It was damaged before and it got damaged again. The new one that was replaced got damaged again. So, there's no suspects on that. There's no cameras or anything. Nobody saw anything. No one knows who's doing it. Like I said, this is the second time, but we'll see if we can get some cameras up or something down there. See what we can do to identify who's doing that because they are pretty expensive, a couple thousand dollars at least, I think, so. And we also had to take somebody for an emergency evaluation that was out at the Seaton Shrine and didn't want to leave, so. I know this form is. Like I said before, a while ago, when I was, when I was doing this, we've got this new form. It doesn't really. Have everything broken down like it used to. We had the 911s, the alarms, all that kind of crashes and all that. This is just something new that, that our, that our agency has come up with is, you know, to kind of blanket, you know, control and as a whole. But if there is something, if you want something broke down, if you want something back the way it was, I mean, we can always. Just reach out. I mean, if there's anything, I said, anything specific you want, you want us to touch on or. You know, you like the old way or whatever. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, we can. Accommodate that as well. Yeah, North Seaton out there.
15, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, they're doing it.
Yeah, right. I, I do have a question for, for the deputy, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
Who, who creates the report? Do, do you manually enter this information in?
Yes.
I mean, because I know you asked if we needed to see more information. I don't want to make more work.
No, it doesn't matter. If there's anything that you're curious about, I mean, you can always. You know, email me, you know, I can show you how the old form was. I can send you one of those too. So, just so you remember, there might be some, something floating around here a while ago. You know what I mean? Like. This was just, this, this new form was just something, just kind of blanket, makes things a little more simple or maybe of what other people are looking at in the agency of, you know, stats and that kind of stuff, so. It's, it's up to you.
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
Anyone else.
I mean, normally, I mean, we're going to highlight anything that happens, you know, you know, anything that needs to be brought to anybody's attention, but there may be some little things like, hey, how many crashes are here now or, or anything like that, so. And another thing, one thing that's not on here. Deputy Ahal did have, he ended up getting COVID. He's okay. He's clear now of it. Right now, he has pneumonia, which he's, I talked to him today and he's recovering. He's, he's doing well, so. He'll be back in the saddle here in a little bit, so. On, on, you talking about on Lincoln or on Main Street? Okay, yeah, that actually brings up a good point. I know that I had, someone reached out to me in an email about as far as crosswalk safety. They sent me, you know, an email asking, or I guess maybe they were confused about when you're standing alongside the road waiting to cross. I guess they were under the, they, they believe the cars had to stop and let them cross, which is not true. The law states you have to be in the crosswalk. Before any cars have to stop for you. So, you can stand on the side of the road all day long.
Yeah.
What's, no one stops, they're not going to stop.
Hit your button. I'm sorry. We're good. Thank you.
So, yeah, you have to be in the crosswalk.
What's the definition in the crosswalk?
Inside the actual crosswalk. Yes, you do. And when you do step in the road, you have to make sure you're within a reasonable, like, the vehicle's in a reasonable distance away, so you're not just going to walk out there and someone's not going to be able to stop. So. Glad you brought that. So, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The right and dead right. Turkey trot.
Yeah, I'll get that. Okay. The damage to the waypoint sign, is that vehicular or someone's?
I think someone's just kind of shaking it, rocking it because they, it breaks down at the bottom, you know, like a couple inches up from the, from the concrete. So, yeah, it's not vehicles. I think people are rocking it and. Because it's a pretty clean break, so.
And thank you for coming out on Thanksgiving Day to lead the turkey chotters out.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, dedicated runners. Yeah, my pleasure. Absolutely. Any other questions for me?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving forward, we now turn to the town manager's report. Ms. Willetts.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for October of 2021. I'll go ahead and highlight some of the key areas related to streets. Staff conducted monthly storm drain inlet cleaning. They patched our cold patched potholes around town. Weed ate and weed killed along East and West North Avenue. They dug out and reposted two yellow bollards at the sharp turn on West Lincoln Avenue. Related to parks, staff came in to help with Arbor Day. They trimmed and put mulch around small Arbor Day trees. They weed ate and pulled weeds from the community garden plots. They also weed ate, pulled weeds and weed killed and put mulch in at the pool fence along West Lincoln. They dug up and removed an old brick water fountain and curb boxes in Memorial Park. They also rotor-tailed Doug Weeds off and salted Ball Field number four in Memorial Park. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. The well usage is being reduced with the increase in the lake water production finally. Well, number two developed a leak at the connection to the pitless adapter. Repairs were quickly made and it was back in service. Water production, we produced an average of 242,533 gallons per day. And we consumed an average of 228,473 gallons per day in October. The backwash amount was about 19.7%. We purchased 435,850 gallons of water from the mount in October. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 531,000 gallons per day, consumed 228,473, which means. 56.9% of the wastewater treated in October was wild water. We did not have any spills of untreated sewage. However, we did exceed the plant's design capacity two times in the month of October. On the 29th and the 30th. We received 3.5 inches of precipitation. We currently have a surplus of 8.32 inches over the last six months. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in December. Some noteworthy items, staff repaired and helped restore the roads to well number three and five. We conducted our semi-annual hydrant flushing. The contractor came out and completely completed the pumping down of the wet well at the, the pump station. Again, rags, grease, grit, a grit pipe and grate were removed from the pit. The contractor for rudders is prepping the site to start the installation of the water and sewer lines and staff repaired a water leak on North Seaton Avenue. And that's all I have for October.
Okay, any questions or comments for staff related to the manager's report? Yes, Mr. Ritz.
Just one, and I pretty much know the answer to it. I know it's going to be good news, but just so it's on record regarding the hydrant flushing. Any issues with groundwater complaints?
No, not at all.
Okay, good. That's what I thought. Good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
So, question for you, and maybe I'm naive in this and uneducated, but just to put it out there. So, if we have a surplus of 8.32 right now. Obviously, we're hoping for a good winner with, you know, possibility of more. Do we have the storage capacity to keep all of that excess water so that, you know, we don't run into the situations in the summer, July, August, where we're underwater restrictions or is that something completely unrelated?
Yeah, it's unfortunately, it's unrelated. We have our storage tank at the water plant that we keep full. And these numbers are from October. We have had, not had much rain since October, so I would imagine that number, when you see it in January, will continue to go down. So, obviously, we, as much as we, you know, snow is that double-edged sword. It, it does help replenish through the winter so that when we do get to the drought, the ground is, is holding a lot of water still.
So, in the events of the future, if we do have this increase in housing. We would obviously be having to put in an additional storage tank for water and water tower and things of that nature to, to maybe handle the excess and then not have these issues or.
Correct. We, we are already in discussions with the engineer that's doing the preliminary engineering report. For our water lines that it does appear that the town will need a additional storage tank in the very near future.
Any other questions for manager? Okay, a couple of quick comments. I know we're jumping from October to November, but I will. The park looked great prior to the turkey trot. I was not able to be at the turkey trot. I was out of town with family. But left that to the capable hands of the race director over here. Moving from there, a comment I received in the dog park was sort of an interesting one. In the area near the water fountains that are now off. The individual expressed concern about during the summer how muddy it gets and their suggestion was to create some sort of either concrete pad or gravel pad. With some means of draining the water like a permeable concrete type surface, so that way. They're comfortable bringing in a dog in because they know others, they say, who aren't comfortable bringing dogs in because they get very muddy. Where the water fountain overflows, like someone will put a little peg in the drain hall and it will spill over.
Right.
So. I've carried that forward. That was a serious concern of theirs. Another is in the small dog area. The, for lack of a better term, the airlock area, the posts are out of alignment. If they can be aligned, which might just mean leaning in a concrete pore.
In the, in the.
For the gates.
The, like, the little waiting area.
Correct. Yeah, yes, pardon me. So, the gates aren't closing and, and I looked at it and their complaints were reasonably valid. And I think it's just, you know, one body, you know, leaning against another one, pouring some sacreed in there and just realigning the posts. I don't think it's a, a heavy duty fix for either of those. The other item, where are we? We were. On a, on an email we'd received from staff related to the possibility of a class action lawsuit related to wipes. Any.
I have not heard anything back on that.
Okay.
I'll follow up again. I'd sent an email out and I have not heard anything back from who the, like, whatever the contact person was on that postcard. I'll have to follow up with them again.
I mean, truth be told, if there's any income that can be gained from that, there might be value in it if it's above and beyond the expense of actually pursuing and maintaining the effort, so.
Right.
That, that might be a really good thing. And other than that, let's see. Hats off to staff again for the preparations for the tree lighting, you know, North Seaton, Main Street, the extended area there. Things look pretty sharp and it was nice that everything that was there at the start of last night was there at the end of last night with our hurricane gale forces, so. And that's it. So, thank you.
Hey, can I piggyback something?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. This is kind of directed at Zach. So, if what he asked about the dog park and putting in like a little cement block there. Could we use that for MS4?
Not enough.
I just thought through what you're on mine too.
I had to throw it out there.
Permeable, yeah.
Yeah, could it be like permeable enough that we'll throw in the 20 by 20? Write it off.
It'd be nice. Yeah.
Well, maybe it'll change for next year. All right, at this time, we now turn to the town planner's report, Mr. Gold.
All right, so this is the planner's report for October. We had a board of appeals meeting on the 18th and I processed the meeting materials for that. Commissioners had a meeting on the first and I prepared a lot of different information for that. I'm still working with our attorney and other parties on the 507 East Main Street hazardous building determination. Grants, community legacy, I submitted a reimbursement request, a quarterly report and a final report for fiscal years 21 and 20. Community development block grant conducted for construction inspections, processed payrolls for 10, 11 and 12 weeks. Process payment request number three, which included field measurements of 17 ramps. I processed the grant reimbursement request. Attended a virtual progress meeting. As of October 31st, there was 46 ramps completed. We did previously state at the public hearing that we expected it, the project to be complete in November. There's been delays and it's not going to be completed. It wasn't completed in November. Cleanup and greenup Maryland grant, I applied for one of those for five new trash containers for the parks, MS4. Silo Hill Stormwater Management Basin retrofit project, we were working on applying for $199,000 Chesapeake and Coastal Grant. The 27 acre tree planting project, I attended two different tree planting events, finalized and submitted our current year MS4 permit. The storm water utility feasibility study project. I attended a conference call, the project kicked off, kickoff with University of Maryland and the town manager. For permits, I processed 17 zoning permit applications, 13 backflow preventer applications, one personal needs fire permit. One grease trap permit and one street closure. And mailed three high hazard backflow permit renewal letters. 14%, currently 14% of the residential properties have a backflow permit or backflow device installed, so please get your backflows installed. Responded to various incident reports, planning commission, the new Creamery Road pump station, I work with our surveyor and attorney on the. Confirmatory deed and roadway deed of dedication, which is on your agenda tonight. Reviewed, processed and prepared the staff memo for that addition plot, which is also on your agenda tonight. Irish Town Road, we finalized the quitclaim deed with the county and also the Irish Town Road transfer agreement with the county. Village Liquors and Plaza Inn, I reviewed updated landscape site and lighting plan for the mayor and planning commission chair signatures. Rudders, I worked with the engineer on sewer construction specification approvals. Ripley's Creamery, I reviewed updated site plan, landscape plan, lighting plan for the mayor and planning commission chair. I worked with our attorney manager, water sewer superintendent on the sewer agreement, process, construction, sign and change of use and grease trap permits. I had a planning commission meeting on the 25th. Under miscellaneous forestry stand 10, 10 project management, I completed and submitted the fiscal year 21 Maryland Department of Transportation Road Improvement Report. I attended a conference call regarding the Frederick County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I met with the Public Works Director, Ryan Holmes representative. Regarding Brookfield Drive damage and there is the new business and development updates. If you have any specific questions.
Any questions for the planner at this time?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
Started with parks. Ever since I became commissioner 23 years ago. We've had the, the two concrete pads in that part in the upper, in community park up behind the. Bandstand that needs picnic tables and trash cans. And if we can get any, the same kind of. Roofs you got put back in the back, bolted to the concrete because the concrete's already there, you wouldn't have to pay for that. If we can get any grant money to get them, it'd be nice to finish those out up there. I mean, it would be a nice little sitting area if you, somebody was using the main pavilion. Somebody else could use two little small pavilions down below where the.
So, there actually is a pavilion that I believe it's been installed. That we did receive grant money to, if you're facing the bandstand to the left. I thought there was a picnic table there now already. Okay, there is one now. Unfortunately, the concrete pad to the right. It cannot be, we cannot put a pavilion there due to the location of the electrical lines for the bandstand and the electrical box. We probably could put a picnic table there. However, we can't, we can't do a pavilion there.
It'd be nice to use the two pads that were already there.
Right, so the one pad's already used. It's got a pavilion and a picnic table that were grant funded. The one to the right, it's too close to the bandstand because originally we were going to do both, but the contractor said do the close proximity, the electric lines and the electric box. They do not recommend putting a pavilion there. It's. It's just too close. And then digging up any lines with the electrical lines there and whatever else is there, so, but we could probably put a picnic table there in the future.
Okay, and maybe a trash can.
I think we're working on grants for trash cans.
All righty, and.
Yep.
Runners. Now onto runners. When are they going, they're getting ready to do the work on the sewer. When are they going to do the? They're getting ready to do the water sewer. When are they going to do the on the east side of fifteen or in the water sewer guy run up across over by sleeping and sleeves?
Yeah. So they are actually doing those. They're supposed to be doing that drilling this week. The directional drilling underneath the road.
One forty?
Yes.
Oh, to go over to that side?
Correct. Yep. That's supposed to be happening this week.
That's nice. That's good to know. And Irish Town Road. Everyone's asking when, why it keeps getting delayed and delayed and delayed.
Sure.
I know it's because of this, the, the, the weather and stuff, but we've had pretty good weather here in the last month.
No, it's not. It's not because of the weather. Actually, it's because they keep hitting rock and it's not able to be demolished with like dynamite. So they have to actually grind into it, which is taking a lot more time due to its proximity to electric lines. Also because of the water lines and other piping is really there's a short, a shortage of it within the United States. So they're having a lot of back ordering going on. So it's not Delauter's fault whatsoever. It's just the COVID nineteen's fault pretty much.
I I just wanted to put out records so everybody would know. At least they would hear that is, it's not because of the weather. It's because of shortage of pipe.
Exactly.
And rock.
Yep, hitting a lot of rock.
Red rock, that's why. It's hollow hill.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
That's all. Mr. Ritz, I'm sorry. Sir, Mr. Ritz, yes, sir.
Just one quick question for Mr. Golden, the stormwater management feasibility study with the University of Maryland. How did that go? Well, good vibes from that meeting. I know there was a little bit of maybe a little bit of apprehension. I know that wasn't the initial vendor that's recommended and I just hope all went well during that first kickoff call.
They're doing great. So couldn't ask for a better group.
Good. So it's good to hear. Thank you. Sure.
Anything else, Mr. Ritz?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, Mr. Golden, I was approached by somebody. What? Where do we have in town right now that is zoned industrial properties that may or be for sale or maybe coming up for sale? I know Creamery Court, is there still property back there? And then what about over by Emmitsburg Glass?
Yeah. So let's start at Emmitsburg East Industrial Park one. That is where Ballinger Construction in Delauter is. There's a few empty lots there. I do know one is currently for sale. I saw it on the listing site. Also, behind Emmitsburg Glass is East Industrial Park two, that property just sold. And there is potential that if there's an industrial business that wants to come into Emmitsburg, they're possibly willing to sell some land there as well.
Anything else, Mr. Burns?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Golden, it's your night for questions. It's exciting. The state highway park and ride near Rudders. Is that land being prepped at all at the same time with Rudders or is that a separate prep that will take place in the future?
So yeah, there's, they're stubbing the streets to go to the actual parking ride. However, that's the only thing that's going to be going in.
True. Okay, so the actual leveling of the parcel is not occurring.
Correct.
Great. Okay. Second item. Behind that parcel, there is activity under the creek or at the creek. It appears as if a power line or water line is coming over. Could you clarify? So again, it's one of those on the record things because I've been asked about that.
Yeah, it's the sewer and water line for Rudders. It's going into our headworks facility.
Terrific. And is it above the creek or is it under the creek?
It's below.
Terrific. Okay, but that's what I was wanting, wanting to hear. Okay. Gosh, next item. We received contact, the commissioners received contact from Mr. Delauter expressing an interest in a town parcel were to come forward for sale. I don't know if that was seen by staff yet or not. No, okay. All right. I will forward that. And I think that's it for me. So and the other comments on your part, and I think we're good to move forward. We're good. Right. Okay, thank you. All right. So now at this time we turn to Commissioner comments. Mr. Ritz, I'll turn to you.
North Seaton Avenue has Christmas decorations. So thank you for getting those up. You know, it's been years in the works there. The guys were outside doing it. I saw the trucks out there. I thought I didn't pay my water bill for a second. And then I saw them putting them on the pole. So looks great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I'll keep it short tonight. Thanks. I'm finished.
Oh, good. All right. Commissioner Burns.
Oh, wow. Good evening, everyone. Wanted to thank all the people that came out for the Turkey Trot. I think we had almost close to fifty five people raised over a thousand dollars plus for the Emmitsburg Food Bank. It was a great weather held out, no wind, wasn't freezing cold, wasn't freezing cold, but it was cold. But it was a great turnout for everybody that showed up. Additionally, wanted to, that morning while all that was going on, I don't know if anybody thanked the maintenance staff for the town who were out digging holes and making sure that everybody was able to still enjoy their Thanksgiving that evening, including finding ways to make sure the carriage house had water for the eight hundred guests they had arriving that afternoon for their Thanksgiving meals. Those guys figured it out quickly, isolated the problem and were able to do a great job. I know Commissioner Davis and I stopped by with some different goodies for them for their troubles, but I don't think those guys get enough credit for, for what they were able to do, especially that day. With making sure that nobody's Thanksgiving really got affected. And I, I think overall, I don't think it affected anybody as far as their food preparations and celebrations that day. So that was great to see those guys and hopefully they get the credit they deserve. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We're sticking with the youth movement. Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
I want to thank the town for all the nice decorations for Christmas. The, the North Seaton especially. I've been there for almost thirty years and that's the first time we had decoration. Well, it looks nice.
Thank you.
The whole town does. I mean, the decorations and we had comments at the town. Well, it looks nice when it's all lit up. I'm going to thank, and we have a town Christmas party coming up for the whole town. For the Lions Club, it will be this Saturday from ten, ten o'clock to one at the ambulance building down on Creamery Road. And it's open to everyone. Doesn't cost anything. Mr. Mr. Santa Claus will be crafts and hot dogs and hot chocolate and all kinds of stuff. So bring all your kids and grandkids out and help support the Lions Club. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Couple of quick things. In the next meeting, I hope to share sort of an update on where things are with the red trail. Moving to more fun things. My hats off to Commissioner Burns for being race director Burns for the Turkey Tribe. I did as much as I could for you. I, I hope it helped. An impressive turnout. The numbers are great. And are we going to have like a handoff of a check in the future to?
Yeah, I'm just waiting on the registration site to take care of all that and then I'll get it all taken care of.
Great. I'm the T-shirt guy also. So the T-shirt should be outbound, hopefully within the next ten to fourteen days. I don't know they will be out before Christmas, but I'll do my best. Next piece, the, where are we? In talking to staff, we've been working regarding a closed session for January. So we've had some delightful back and forth about the timing for it with the mayor with Ms. Willitt. So I think the second week or third week is what I think what we're trying to shoot for. Mr. Davis is not here. I'd like him to have the final say as he's the one who made the request. But just so everybody knows that ball is still rolling. Okay.
See my comments from the town attorney? And that
I believe I did regarding the language and the name. Yes, absolutely. So yeah, absolutely. Part of that hand and glove process. Yes. So moving from there. The lights look great. Staff, thank you. I've seen the outcomes of the clean streets. Definitely, you know, the leaves and the gutters look good. The town looks sharp. It's nice to see. I think that sets a real tone. The weeds are gone from the corners as we come into town. One thing that was shared with me was what is it? The sign on the south side of town or the east side of town rather. The Welcome to Emmitsburg sign seems to be faded, so you can't really see it. Like the gold lettering is losing its glitter. So for what it's worth, maybe I should have shared that earlier, but outside of that, these are my comments. So now we turn to the mayor, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if everybody out there knows, but Matty and Tyler Shaw had a beautiful young daughter just before Thanksgiving and they're doing well and she's on maternity leave until the I was somewhere in January and we miss her and we're in touch with her, but everything seems to be going well. You mentioned one thing tonight about the, you know, the new concession stand and we're all getting excited about that. The staff is working diligently to get the grant money to build it and, and we're going to ask the go into the coffers of the town for a lot of people don't play baseball and, and enjoy the park and their taxes go there. So we're going to have to look, ask you all the next time around when the budget is coming up that we're going to have to create some revenue out, out of that, that park up there. We have a lot of guests coming. I, I want to wait till Frank Davis gets back. He's really involved in baseball and really worked hard on it. So I'll leave it there, but you know, there's going to be electricity and all these things. They're going to be going all the concession stand and in all fairness to the, the elderly people in our, in our community and those that don't play baseball, we, we have to have some reason on that. It's, it's a wonderful congratulations to staff. Also, the staff, congratulations, getting the grant for the tag readers, ninety eight thousand dollars for tag, tag readers for cars that go in and out of town. If, if, if there was an incident here, you probably could fill us in better on that, but where there was disruption of services, I'll call it out the liquor store and we could have traced that car if, if we had a tag reader. It's just an element that that we, we'll have available to us, but I want to really congratulate the staff because they, that was an uphill battle because we didn't get any support from downtown, downtown on that and and they, but we have a lot of ground support to do it. They, they, they're just hit home runs on that. We're losing Dr. Bernie Franklin as a resident wonderfully. He's been here about three or four years and does some wonderful things at the university. He's stepped down as a member of the planning commission in, in January first, he's accepted a fellowship at Harvard. And he's going to be moving up there, be selling his house, but he's wonderful. So we have another opening on the planning commission and we're all kind of skewed to that Brookfield out that direction. So we're, we're looking for people around the town to help out on the planning commission and we're scurrying to do that. But congratulations, Dr. Franklin on that. How about the staff on Thanksgiving Day? Thank you, Commissioner Burns for recommend. I was there and we're working with the town manager. We're trying to figure out how to do this so we don't cut off the carriage house and and that was, that, that's the home runs, the stuff you don't see and the, the little stuff they did for the Turkey Trot, the little stuff they do for community day. The staff is always there working on something to make behind the scenes and, and, and the wonderful tree lighting we had. That was a terrific success last night. We had the Christ Community Church Children Choir there. The Mount Flute Corral was terrific. And they were brought to us by the library as a sponsor. It's a good little crowd down there with the weather, rain and inclement weather. And then we all moved down to the carriage house down there and it was a terrific evening down there. It's, it's something like the thirty third year they've had it. At least that's that Santa Frank Schmierzol. I, I, I don't, I don't know in the room here still. Well, maybe do still believe Santa, but it's really Frank Schmierzol and he
Mr. Mayor.
Done it for thirty, he's done it for thirty three years. Sorry, apologies. Don't put that in the minutes. Very much. A dog park, you know, you'll, you'll go by there at six in the morning. When it's dark, you'll see a flashlight in there and you'll hear barking as you're going by. It scares you to death, but that thing is a home run. Again, the staff and getting all the grants for that, but it's it really works well. I learned so the hard at the farm we had, you know, we get a pothole or gravel drive. We say, let's fill it in with concrete and then somebody more sensible has been a farming long time. Well, if you put the concrete there, all, all you're going to do is have a puddle over here beside it and, and it should be a permeable surface, like you're saying somehow to get to and, and aggregate it and get it done there. Let's see, how about the, we talked about the decorations by the staff on the tree out there. It's phenomenal. And I think that we're winding up here. Just one more thing on, I will be resuming the podcast series I had last year and my first guest this Thursday will be President Trainer. Just, just a couple of quick things. I'll be out of here. I did go down to the home builders as their guest and talked to their board about MS four. I did visit with the scene, some senior officers from Woodsboro at their office down on Second and North Market. Woodsboro came up here. They've been up here a couple of times and we banked with them. They gave us a terrific rate on a a CD about two years ago where we had some excess money of a million dollars. We're getting two percent on that still. And, and, and where everybody else gets a half of nothing. So there, went down, visited them and had a Zoom meeting with the Sustainable Executive Committee. I'm on a member of that. Attended Mass at St. Joe's for the Veterans Day Tribute. And I went around again with the tribute that the American Legion, BFW Honor Guard twenty one guns. That's a twenty one gun salute. I apologize, but they're at, at all the cemeteries, the doughboy and the American Legion. That's, it's just a terrific tribute. They do that on Memorial Day and this day. And thank you very much. The rugby team from Old Glory, the professional rugby team for the Washington DC was up here. I met with them later in the, in the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
President. Quick question.
Mr. Burns, yes, sir.
I guess it's both for planner and everyone. We spent a lot of time discussing five G a few months back, maybe a year plus. Whatever happened with any of that? Did anybody ever approach us or anything? Cause I, I get five G every once in a while up here. I didn't know if someone snuck some stuff in or
No, not that we know of. The only, the only thing we know of is the Comcast is putting new lines out in Brookfield and we
And Pembroke.
And Pembroke.
The only thing we heard was before we passed the infrastructure, we received an email, I think it was from Verizon, asking if we had that in place. That's the last time we heard of anything.
So maybe the Build Back Better money will bring us something. Or if you're getting something now, maybe you're being monitored by Sidor, just saying.
Oh, who knows, but the two things, you know, somewhere, some of that money is going is the train depot that's going into Thurmont. Did you see that?
Yes.
That's big. And then, oh, for everyone to be prepared for the fact that the bridge in Thurmont is going to take nine years. I don't know if anybody has traveled north on fifteen has seen that the roadwork was supposed to start on the thirtieth and then the third, and now it's the eighth. And my guess, it'll be the fifteenth, twenty fifth, thirty first, and then sometime in twenty twenty three it'll start. So we should just be prepared for, and Deputy White House is already getting on because he knows. We should just be prepared for that because I know if it's anything like our bridge, this is, this will be a joy coming up fifteen. Actually Deputy White House, they're going to put a speed camera there? That's going to be fun.
Trade secret.
Can't wait.
Okay. At this time, we now turn to public comments. We have signed up a Mariella Roca. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Mariella is intending to run for Congress in the Maryland Eighth District, Maryland Eighth Congressional District. She, okay, so we have lost her.
She, I, I, I did, I did reach out to Dr. Roke. I know she emailed all of us. She, unfortunately, she wanted to be in person this evening. She had a dinner to attend, so she at least wanted to call in to say hello. She doesn't tend to come to her a future meeting, maybe even in January. So I didn't, I looked on the email just a little bit ago to see if there was, I didn't see anything. So she probably couldn't.
Understood.
Last.
Well, thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we now turn to Mr. Kevin Hogan, who is intending to speak on the census report. Mr. Hogan, yes, sir. If you could join us at the dais again, identify yourself and your home address. And then the floor is yours for the timing.
Okay, Kevin Hagan, thirteen oh four Huntley Circle. Recently, all the commissioners were forwarded the census report from the two thousand and twenty census. I, I just wanted to get people on the record and speak to the town. While the population of town was a one point six percent shrink down, our total in housing units increased by a good percentage. So we're saying it's mixed messages here, and I just wanted to see what the board's opinions and growth going forward because population shrinkage affects grants, housing growth affects grants. What's the plan going forward? For everything? Or what's your opinion on it?
Well, I think part of your population growth and or shrinking is you also have a generation of people that moved in here in the early two thousands whose kids have all left and moved out and gone to college and or moved away. I know Commissioner O'Donnell, I know you have several in college. And I don't know if they count towards your census at this time. I know several in my neighborhood have kids that have left to go to college and or moved away. So I mean, I think you we have an aging, not aging, but we are aged out in some ways in the explosion that we had in the early two thousands, two thousand four through two thousand eight with all the development in Brookfield and those areas where young children did move in who are now of adult age and have, you know, moved on and we haven't seen that housing growth since then. With, you know, more younger families moving in and bringing that population back up. So, you know, obviously there has been the push for development within Brookfield, within other areas, Southgate and things of that nature. But obviously, the nature of the beast is the housing market hasn't been great. And with the steady increase over the last you know, year and year and a half, you're not going to see those younger families moving in. In addition, I think something we've addressed over and over and over again is Emitsburg Elementary. You know, if you're looking from an educational standpoint and you have choices of staying in Southern Frederick County and things of that nature. You know, we've addressed this on multiple, multiple occasions that the county needs to come up and look at that school and realize that in order for growth to happen in Northern Frederick County, that school is going to have to be addressed. Mother City has done a great job with expanding their classrooms, but at the same time, there has to be that alternative within the public school system for Frederick County and they need to realize that. So, yes, there's going to be issues with grants and things of that nature as the continuing population ages out and moves on. But, you know, we've we've done the best that we could over the last several years to try to create those opportunities for more and more people to come in. It's just it's a difficult situation, especially as the continued growth of Frederick and Frederick City continues.
So also to quote tell on that. I did talk to executives at the Census Bureau prior to the census, prior to COVID and since. And we've heard from town staff who waited and also the university population in town was not here. And that's not a huge portion, but it's more than fifty six people, I can assure you. We've seen a change with the daughters and their facility. So there's a reduction there that's forthcoming. So the numbers are going to be diminished, but at the same time, where the daughters affected it was also average income. So there was sort of an adjustment there that kind of lifted that. So we see population numbers decline. I believe we saw average income increase based on their moving of the headquarters.
That sixty seven person hit.
Correct.
That's that's a big chunk.
That was correct. And floor. And exactly. And given the fact that there was a consolidation prior to that, when the daughters consolidated their operations. With the college thing, this kind of was the point I'm getting to. I asked the question prior to the COVID events of exec. I said, okay, explain something to me. So we're a college town in part. And are we are we counting our college kids as residents? They said, yes, absolutely. And then they said also they can be counted in their hometowns as well. So you do get a double skew on that. There's an advantage that we would would have had, but did not have. Now, if you want to talk about long term planning, I'd be happy to sit down with you and talk about, you know, I think each of us would be happy to talk about like a long term vision, one to one as to, you know, where we see the town going and how we'd like to see it go. But I don't know that this is the format where we could do that necessarily.
Right. I understand that. It's just I want to raise the issue. We're sending mixed message. And when it comes to funding, the staff here does an incredible job of getting grants. And this is gonna be a dagger hanging above their head. It's gonna be some of those questions coming.
So to clarify, where do you feel there's a
Well, a lot of times.
Let me finish, please. Let me finish. Where do you feel there's a mixed message that we're communicating as a town staff or town office?
I don't think it's a mixed message. I think the census report is a mixed message where we're growing in housing units.
Okay.
We're shrinking in that and it creates it hard when you're out there. It's somebody that fills out grant proposals. One of the questions they ask all the time is, you know, where's your population? Is it growing? You know, is your housing unit is growing and shrinking? It can impact that and it's as great as a job as the staff here does at getting grants. We're gonna hand. We're gonna put handcuffs on them now that we have to, as a town, talk about ways around this.
So I've been involved in grant applications where I am at work and it's an anomalous time period and those who evaluate grants are very attuned to the fact that this is an irregular time. So grant criteria are certainly modified. So take heart there. And you're right, they're, you know, they're the all star team for grant getting trails. So for what it's worth. Just saying. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Ritz, perhaps, or Mr. Sweeney. I'll be quiet.
No, just keep it quick. I I'm not alarmed. Like you make some good points, you know, with the housing going up. Yes, we went down forty four folks. I know the daughter, like it was stated, not so much the nursing home closing because that was recent. I think that was after the census results, but the daughter's a charity moving operations to St. Louis, you know, that that took a hit for the for that population of our demographics there. So I think that's the major contributor right there. I feel comfortable. I'm pretty confident in the next ten years there'll be continued growth in the town. Steady steady growth and we'll be looking at different numbers. And I just got I just got dinged. Thanks.
No, that was me.
No. I think I'm finished. I think I think that's that's pretty much why I have.
Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
I I don't have a problem. I don't think it's gonna hurt us too much because I think our we have planned well. We have stuff plans and coming up in the future of development coming. Which will bring back some of the the population that we lost with the sisters because there was a couple hundred sisters out there before they got transferred to their new place. There used to be a quarter of the vote here in town. Possibly lost us the three floors of rehab out there. People was living out there promptly and
Mr. Donald. Are you through? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Sweeney. I'm sorry.
But I think it will come back with the new development we have in the plans and the next census, we should see a big increase in what the town needs to have. I know we it's a shame that we only get eighteen thousand dollars per person or whatever it is, but I hope we didn't lose too much.
I'm good. It's rare. Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah. Gosh. Chris Sweeney, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Were you singing last night, Commissioner Sweeney or no?
Yes.
Oh, good.
I missed the tree lighting about five minutes. I had to work late.
I heard that from Commissioner Donald.
Yeah, I went by. You guys were all singing. I went by and said, okay, and then it was wind and rain and
That was good. It was nice out there. It's like sailing.
I made it there, but I didn't get to see the lighting.
Okay, yeah, just get back to your point on development. We I think we've brought twenty three new houses online out at out of Brookfield and we have nineteen more. Now, I've been around everybody there and there are a couple of single occupant owners there, but a lot of them have have some pretty good families. So I think you could say if we get forty forty houses, forty two houses there, you can say there are at least three, three times. So about a hundred and twenty people are coming here and we're looking at Emmett Ridge, hopefully that'll come along. So but what scares me more than the having the population go is that we're also gonna have at least eighty new cars wanting to share the road with us at all our little flashpoint intersection. But a population coming back is really good. We fought to get Ryan back and they're back and and they're really, really good to work with and it's been a joy to work with. I think I sure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we now turn to administrative business and free holiday metered parking for consideration. Every year at this time, we consider allowing free parking on Main Street. I believe we set the dates last time. Is that correct? Do we discuss those dates?
No, we're gonna set those dates tonight.
Sorry. All right.
It's it's been customary the last several years. Falls on a Friday to Monday after the holiday. And so in discussions with the mayor that the recommendation will be beginning this Friday, December tenth through until Monday, January third, twenty twenty two would be free metered parking. East and West Main Street.
Okay. And one of the recipients I had asked about was again, to repeat, the Friends of the Emmitsburg Library. Mr. Sweeney, you had also mentioned another group, I believe.
It was the Lions Club.
Lions Club, okay.
And the food bank. So I think it was three ways and that one that wasn't even.
I believe that's what we did last time. Is that right? Okay. So
We had percentages too, didn't we? Or was it gonna be like a three way split?
Yeah, it was thirty three.
I don't know why I was thinking it was fifty, twenty five, twenty five, but.
I think you're right, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward, do we want to go thirty three, thirty three, thirty three or one thirty each?
Doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter to me either.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and do that then? One thirty each, if that's okay?
I think it's all fair.
Okay. Okay, so with that in mind. Is there a motion to accept the free metered parking dates as Friday, December tenth, twenty twenty one through Monday, January third, twenty twenty two? With the beneficiaries being the Lions Club, the Friends of the Emmitsburg Library and the Emmitsburg Food Bank. Each receiving one third of the funds. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner Ritz and seconded by Commissioner Burns. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent. We now turn to the consent agenda.
You can, Mr. Mayor.
We had Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. We accepted the resignation of Ron Lynn after many years of service on the board and wonderful relationship and October twelfth and we appointed Levi S. This is a regular member of the Board of Appeals. He was an alternate. His term will be December seventh, two thousand twenty one to February seventeen, two thousand twenty three. And the appointment of Scott Frager as an alternate to the Board of Appeals term, December seventh, two thousand twenty one to January eleventh, two thousand twenty four. For your consideration.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, so do we need to vote to accept Mr. Lynn's resignation? Is that correct?
Yeah, since it's consent agenda, just to consent on all three items.
Okay, well, I'm gonna take them one at a time because I have to abstain from the second item.
So no, that's correct. You can do, but they're all consent.
Okay, sure. Gotcha. Okay, so is there a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Ronald Lynn from the Board of Appeals effective October twelfth, twenty twenty one?
As I moved.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent. Okay, Mr. Sweeney, I'm gonna have to abstain from the second one. I want to turn this over to you, sir.
Movement of Levi S. S is for the regular number of Board of Appeals. Do you want me to do both on the same time?
Just the second one, please.
Second one. I need a motion to
I'll make a motion to appoint Levi S. This is a regular member of the Board of Appeals.
Second.
Motion to be made and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any ayes? Misses carries four to zero. Commissioner Davis absent.
Three to zero.
I'm sorry, three to zero.
With myself abstaining.
Commissioner Donald abstaining abstaining.
Consent is unanimous consent. There's no motion. There's no approval. But you're fine. We can proceed.
I thought we have all the other ones. We all just kind of said, yep.
All right. I guess I'm being careful with the abstaining.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we turn lastly to the appointment of Scott Frager, an alternate to the Board of Appeals, the term of December seventh, twenty twenty one through January eleventh, twenty twenty four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry. Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent. Okay, okay, I complicated things. My apologies. We now turn to the treasurer's report. Mr. Burns.
This is the treasurer's report for December seventh, two thousand twenty one. As of November first, the cash balance was seven million, five hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred and seventy seven. We had deposits in the amount of four hundred and thirty three thousand, six hundred and eighty six with withdrawals of three hundred and fifty five thousand, four hundred and sixty one. That left us with an operating balance forward of seven million, six hundred and three thousand, six hundred and two. The top ten checks are listed below and any questions for myself or staff can be answered now.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Do we?
I make.
We don't need a motion.
We just go ahead.
No, all right, I'm you know, I'm rusty.
Your motion happy.
My motion happy. I like that.
Okay.
Motion is sick. It looks good. Thanks.
Okay, very good. All right, so we can we accept this as presented. Very good. All right, moving forward. We now turn to the planning commission report.
There is no report. We did not meet in November. However, we are meeting in two days, potentially again later in the month. Oh, good. Okay, we're meeting in two days, so I'll have something for you in January.
Okay. Any preview of the agenda off the top of your head? Anything of note?
Drawing a blank. I'm gonna refrain. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Mr. Golden. Sure. So Village Liquors in Plaza Inn on Silo Hill Parkway, they're looking to subdivide now.
And that's the item. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. This is the property. Sorry, this is the property that backs up to the Silo Hill community, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, we now finally turn to our regular agenda items. And we look forward eagerly to hearing our audit presentation. At this time, I invite Ms. Michelle Mills of De Leon and Stang to come forward with our presentation. Three hours later, yes. All right, you made it. Well done. So you all know red means the mic is live, just so you're up to speed. In fairness to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having us this evening. We've been saying it most of our recent presentations. It's nice to be live and in person again, so we might be a little rusty. All right, this evening, we will be presenting fiscal year twenty twenty one's audit results. With me this evening is Addie Blickenstaff, Senior Auditor with the firm who led the engagement for this fiscal year. We're going to start with some certain communications that are required communications at the conclusion of each audit. We've highlighted a number of the key points. In your packet, you would have received the entire letter. It's a stapled letter that was distributed, I think, before the meeting began. But here's the key highlights from the letter. The first item, there were no new accounting policies adopted and existing policies did not change during fiscal year twenty twenty one. There were no transactions that were entered into by the town that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management in performing and completing the audit. There were two material audit adjustments that were identified and corrected by management and they are listed there. There were no disagreements with management during the audit. You're familiar with this. We think it's important to outline the responsibilities of each party. The financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility as auditors is to plan and perform the audit to make sure that the financial statements are free of material misstatement and to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. The town received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means it was a clean audit report. In accordance with government auditing standards, we considered the town's internal controls over financial reporting and compliance.
There are two levels of findings that can be detected. The first is a material weakness, which is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. We are pleased to report there were no material weaknesses in internal controls that were identified for fiscal year twenty one. The next is a significant deficiency, which is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. There was one significant deficiency noted as a result of fiscal year twenty twenty one audit, which we're going to look at now. This is finding twenty twenty one dash oh oh one, internal controls over vendor payments. Again, this is just copied and pasted from the audit report. So you do have this in the back of the audit report. I'm gonna just highlight, as you can see, there's a lot on this screen. So the condition. the town utilizes a resident vendor within its accounting system for any, for any vendor that does not require a full vendor setup. For example, a one-time miscellaneous payment to a resident. When checks are written to this resident vendor, the vendor's name and address does not print, it is handwritten on the check. During our preliminary audit procedures in June, there's a total of ninety-eight thousand paid to this vendor. We selected seven large checks from this category, which ranged from forty-six hundred dollars to twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for further testing. Trace the checks, uh, to the correct date and vendor and cancel check image and noted no exceptions. Uh, the checks selected for testing were primarily for payments related to the community legacy grant. During our final fieldwork procedures, we noted two significant checks written, uh, after year end. One in August, the twenty twenty-one for sixty-seven thousand dollars and the second one written on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one for ninety-five thousand dollars, both related to a new capital project of the town. When we reviewed the supporting invoices of these checks, the check request forms were requested by the town planner and a note was written on this form indicating to return the check to the town planner. Per review of the canceled check images for both of these items, the vendor's name and address were handwritten, which agreed to the supporting, uh, invoices. However, these checks were paid with the resident vendor setup. The cause, per inquiry, it's been the town's practice to use this vendor category for one-time and/or miscellaneous payments to vendors who will not routinely be paid by the town in order to ha- avoid having a multitude of vendors within their accounting system who may never be used again. The overall effect, uh, there are handful effects noted in regard, uh, to this finding. First, the town's accounting system is not accurately storing vendor payment information, information specifically for grant-related projects. The town's accounting system should track vendor activities to ensure complete records for tax and reporting purposes. Second, the practice of printing checks without the vendor's name and address poses a heightened risk of misappropriation and is not a recommended practice. And third, payments should not be requested and noted to be returned to the same town employee as this takes away segregation of duties of the vendor payable process and increases the potential risk of misappropriation. So we recommended the town review its current policies over the resident vendor payments and make changes as considered necessary to ensure segregation of duties are maintained, payments are tracked properly within the accounting system, and the town establishes a policy of when the use of handwritten checks is appropriate. Uh, management was required to provide us with a response, which is listed here, and essentially, uh, in an effort to use the resident vendor at a minimum, there will be a new policy to set up a separate vendor in the accounting system. If it is known that the person or, uh, entity is to be used more than once and/or the amount is known to be six hundred dollars or above, and every effort will be made to have the office manager distribute the requested check either by mail as is normal or if the vendor requests to pick up the check at, at the office. So I just wanted to pause because that was a lot of information and if, in, any of you have any questions regarding this finding, we can answer them now or we can touch on it later, uh, when we finish the PowerPoint.
Good questions from the board.
Keep going, okay?
Okay, ready.
On the next slide, we have a few financial highlights for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The town's assessable base increased three point seven percent. Uh, the tax rate remained the same. As of June thirty, twenty twenty-one, the town's proportionate share of the net pension liability was approximately six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. There were no new debt borrowings during fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Principal payments of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars were made. Two loans were paid off during fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The two thousand loan with the Maryland Water Quality and the two thousand one CDA loan were paid off. As of June thirty, twenty twenty-one, the town did have five point five million in debt obligations and approximately a hundred and eighty-nine thousand of that will be due within the next twelve months. Subsequent to year end, the town did receive, uh, just under one point six million under, uh, the ARPA Act. As you all are familiar with, um, the Gatsby reporting model requires two sets of financial statements. So as we are presenting this evening, you're gonna hear us use the terminology government-wide financial statements as well as fund level. And we'll make sure as we're going through them, we identify them as such.
The first required statement is the statement of net position. Uh, total assets for the town as of year end were just about thirty-nine point five million, which was a small decrease of less than one percent from the prior fiscal year. As you can see from the pie chart, governmental activities comprises just under seven million or eighteen percent of the total, with the remaining eighty-two percent or thirty-two and a half million represented by business-type activities, i.e. water and sewer services. This chart breaks down the six point nine million of governmental activity assets into the significant categories. As you can see on the left-hand side in the light green, capital assets are about sixty-one percent of that total. Cash and cash equivalents were just under one point four million as of year end. The investment balances, the two CDs that the town hold had just over a million or fifteen percent. And there's a small other balance of about two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. If we compare that to the significant assets of the business-type activities, you can see that eighty-three percent or just over twenty-seven million is held with our capital assets. Cash and cash equivalents reported a year-end balance of five point two million and there's a small three hundred and fifty thousand or one percent of other balances. On the opposite side, the total liabilities for the town as of year end were just about seven point one million. Again, a less than one percent increase from the prior fiscal year. Business-type activities held six point three million of that year-end balance and governmental activities had approximately seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. The most significant liabilities of the seven hundred and sixty-five thousand for governmental activities was the net pension liability, the dark blue of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand or fifty-one percent. Compensated absences represented two hundred and thirty-one thousand and there are payables and accrued expenses that represented nineteen percent of the year-end balance. For business-type activities, you can see where the dark blue color that eighty-eight percent or five point five million represents a long-term debt. Uh, small other balances, the net pension liability of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. There was a cash overdraft reported for business-type activities of a hundred and thirty-three thousand and remaining other balance, which is your payable and accrued expenses of three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
As a quick reminder, at the bottom of each slide is a reference, uh, of a page number that will take you back to the audit report should you need to go back, uh, later to look at exactly where the information is coming from. Um, when you're looking at the financial statements, you'll see terminology deferred inflows and deferred outflows. Again, that's unique to a governmental financial statement. Um, we've provided the definition of what a deferred outflow and a deferred inflow is and have categorized what they are. Your deferred outlaw, outflows consist primarily of pension-related activities and accounts for just over a hundred and six thousand for the governmental activities and just over a hundred thousand for your business-type activities. And your deferred inflows, um, is a combination of items related to your pension as well as some unearned revenues and benefit assessments. Uh, for governmental activities, it was just under or just over a hundred and seventy-seven thousand and business-type activities reported about fifty-seven thousand. This next slide just gives you a quick accounting equation when you're looking at the financial statements to remember that the assets plus your deferred outflows minus your liabilities and your deferred inflows gets the net pension for the town. The net position for governmental activities was just over six point one million and for your business-type activities, it was about twenty-six point three million. On the next slide, you'll just see it as a, as a pie chart, seeing that eighty-one percent of your net position is related to business-type activities and your governmental activities comprise the remaining nineteen percent. You'll see the terminology on your financial statements called restricted net position. Um, we've highlighted here what that comprises for your governmental activities. Um, there are impact fees of thirty-three thousand and there are funds that have been set aside for the emergency warning system that have a balance of about fourteen thousand, six hundred for the total forty-seven thousand, six hundred that's showing on the, um, page thirty-eight of the audit report. For your business-type activities, there were surcharges that were collected for the water and sewer funds collectively just over a million dollars. Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand specifically for water improvements and seven hundred and forty-six thousand for sewer improvements.
The next required statement is the statement of activities, which reports, um, total expenses and program revenues. As you can see, this is a statement of activities for the governmental activities. Total expenses were just under two point one million. Government activities had charges for services of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Operating grants and contributions of two hundred and six thousand, capital grants and contributions of a hundred and forty-three thousand. So you can see for governmental activities, the majority of the expenses are funded by general revenues of one point six million, which is essentially the town's property taxes, income taxes and items to that nature. If we compare that to the business-type activities, which reported year-end expenses of two point one million, you can see in the next column is primarily funded by the charges for services of one point six million. There was a thirty thousand dollar operating grant as of year end and a hundred and fifty-four thousand of general revenues. Overall, government-wide, there was a decrease in net position of thirty-seven thousand. Government activities reported a positive increase of two hundred and thirty-one thousand with business-type activities having a negative two hundred and sixty-eight thousand change in net position. We're now gonna switch from the government-wide basis and focus on the fund level. Uh, so this is the balance sheet of the governmental funds, which just as a reminder includes the general and the capital projects fund. Total assets were just about two point seven million, total liabilities of a hundred and forty-four thousand. Uh, it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of deferred inflows for remaining fund balance of two point four million at year end. That two point four million dollars of fund balance is required to be broken down into the following five components, of which you can see one point five million is unassigned at year end and we're gonna detail the remaining four categories on the next couple slides. As Michelle had noted, there is forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars of restricted fund balance, uh, which is related to the impact fees in the emergency warning system. The next level is the committed fund balance, which are amounts that can only be used for specific purposes because of a formal action, i.e. a resolution or ordinance that has been made by the mayor and board of commissioners. So as of year end, a hundred and eight thousand is committed for the purpose of paying employee benefits when such employees retire or otherwise leave the town. And then the next level is the assigned bound, fund balance, which are amounts that are constrained by the town's intent to be used for specific purposes but don't meet that required definition to be classified as restricted or committed. So as of year end, this represents the residual fund balance of the capital projects fund of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is intended to be used for capital projects in future years. The second required statement of the fund level is the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balances. As you can see, for governmental funds reported two point three million of revenues in fiscal year twenty-one, just over two million of expenditures. There was about thirteen thousand of proceeds from the sale of capital assets, which resulted in an excess of revenues over expenditures of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
This next slide, um, gives some additional information on the reconciling items. Again, sometimes it's difficult to keep, um, keep track of how things are being accounted for because there are two sets of financial statements. So this slide is here to help. Um, when we're talking about the issuance of debt, when we're looking at it from a fund-level perspective, it is reported as an other financing source. And when we are looking at it from a government-wide perspective, um, governmental activities, it's a liability similar to a business. When we're paying down our debt, it's an expenditure for fund-level reporting and a reduction of liability for government-wide presentation. Um, when we are constructing and acquiring assets, it's an expenditure for fund-level reporting but ends up being reported as an asset on the government-wide financial statements. Similar depreciation is only recorded on the government-wide fin- financial statements and is not reported at all on the fund-level financial statements. And the pension-related items that we refer to are only reported at the government-wide perspective and not at the fund level. So again, this is a good resource for you, um, when you're looking between the two sets of financial statements. And this next slide, again, not materially different this year, but certainly could be different. Um, as Addie mentioned, the excess of revenues over expenditures was a positive number, number at the fund level, just over two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And the change in net position for governmental activities was a positive two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Again, not materially different, but you can see that there are a number of items that make up the fifty thousand dollar swing between the two of them. So as we mentioned, the debt service payments are the principal payments of about fourteen thousand. Um, depreciation expense for the general government assets was just over two, two hundred and sixty-one thousand. There was a loss on the disposal of capital assets that does not get reflected at the fund level, um, but shows up on the government-wide. Our capital outlay, again, were expenditures at the fund level, but assets on the government-wide presentation and that was three hundred and twenty-six thousand for this fiscal year. Um, and the change in compensated absences was about, uh, eighty-eight thousand as well as the net pension adjustment of about fifteen thousand. So again, net isn't a big difference, but the individual line items individually are.
So a quick question regarding the loss on disposal of capital assets. Does that mean we're selling something for less than its value? Or is this, is there an algorithm that I'm unaware? I mean, what's the, what's the cause of the loss?
I mean, so I don't think.
If you could hit your button, sorry, thanks.
Sorry.
Yep.
Turned it off. Um, I don't, I don't think, uh, the loss resulted as a result of sold assets. Uh, the, I think about twenty thousand of it was related to the town had bought new, uh, mowers and had traded in new mowers, right Cole?
The old van shell will still be depreciated.
Correct.
Okay.
It would have a book value.
Right.
But when we replaced the van shell, we would, we set that up as the new asset and we disposed of the old van shell asset that still had
Great.
of value as far as, uh, not being fully appreciated.
It had the surface life left in it.
Yes, correct.
Perfect, okay.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Great.
So if there were proceeds involved with any sale, those would have been reflected and this would have been net of those proceeds. Yep. Um, we're now gonna focus on the proprietary funds, which again, the town has two enterprise or proprietary funds, the water and the sewer fund. And we're just gonna highlight the revenue and expenses, uh, for each fund as compared to the prior year. So for the water fund, you can see that operating revenues had about a twenty-nine percent increase from four hundred and eighty-two thousand to six hundred and twenty-one thousand as of year-end fiscal year twenty-one. Operating expenses increased by about seven point seven percent. Uh, this obviously, um, lessened our operating loss from two hundred and eighteen thousand to a hundred and thirty-three thousand for an overall change in net position of a negative ninety-three thousand at year end. Uh, the items included getting from operating loss to change in that position are your non-operating items such as interest expense and interest income. This is the same graph, but for the sewer fund, so sewer fund also had an increase of operating revenues of about fifteen point seven percent ending the year at just over a million dollars. Operating expenses were comparable to fiscal year twenty. You can see one point two million in each fiscal year. Again, this lessened the operating loss from three hundred and one thousand at year-end fiscal year twenty to an operating loss of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand at June thirty, twenty twenty-one for an overall year-end change in that position for the sewer fund of a negative a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And we are open to any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, uh, there are a lot of ratios you had up and, uh, I ca- I ca- I guess they could reduce into ratios that, then I just wanna make sure they're healthy. You do a lot of municipal accounts, accounting, but, uh, let's just start with, um, our net pension liability of fifty-one percent. Are, are they comparable to other towns? I, I know everybody's a different size, but are we, is there anything, when we, where any, uh, direction we're going in that we may need to look at?
I don't necessarily think that there were any red flags. The net pension's probably a difficult one to put your finger on because, again, it's based on the number of employees you have, the age of the employees, um, length of service. Again, it's based on the number of employees you have, the age of the employees, length of service. It's based on actuary. So that one's a little tougher. You know, your debt doesn't seem ridiculous for the town. I mean, we have several that have significantly more debt and then we have some municipalities that have zero debt.
Is that ratio of cash, a cash equivalent to capital assets? I mean liquidity, is that about fifteen to sixteen?
I'd say yours is very favorable.
That's very good. Okay. All right. Those are my questions there. I think when we're getting back to talking about the water. And sewer, we're probably, I think we're going to announce tonight, I think the town manager, maybe that we're going to. Look at hiring a firm to. That's to look at our water and sewer rates where we have a really very firm request from USDA. To increase our water rates and so that this is a shop word word of segue into that. That we, we really need to take a look at that.
And just to note, the operating revenues of both water and sewer fund did increase, but that was primarily as a result of connection fees. Received during the year and not necessarily water and sewer service charges.
Thank you. My question.
And I do think it is important on those last two slides, when we are highlighting the water and water fund and sewer fund, operating income or loss. Again, those would be benchmarks that you should be looking at. Obviously, you want to have service charges sufficient to cover your. Operating expenses. And so while there was significant improvement in both of them, it was related to connection fees. Which I think has been the case probably for the last two, if not more years.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Not so much a question, a comment.
Yes, sir.
Just this, I guess. Two thousand and fourteen, when I was first elected, this is the first time I saw a deficiency in an audit. So it looked like it was handled. Very well and not nothing, nothing of alarm on my end. I'm assuming probably we'll be seeing a policy. The board may be seeing a. An agenda item for a policy, so. Looked like that, that went well and. Just wanted to throw in there, congratulations to Ms. That's all I have. Thank.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Burns. So a clarification, one of the early items and their required communications. There's mention of two misstatements, three misstatements, it appears. What is the nature of the misstatement? I'm trying to understand the, I say, the jargon versus plain spoken.
And which one are you referring to? The first or the second bullet or either of them?
Either one would be fine. I mean, we have a misstatement related to the water fund, a misstatement related to. Bay restoration fee and also water fund and also sewer fund.
Yeah, sure. So the first one was to record additional construction progress cost. So this was when we looked at subsequent checks, we noted there was fifteen thousand dollars of costs that were incurred through June thirty twenty twenty one. That weren't reflected in the correct period and it related to the. I'm drawing a blank on the, the construction progress for the water fund. Yeah. I think it was a water line. So it's an ongoing project, but yet we have to report the expenses in the correct period.
Okay.
So it was just, it was just a miss. The second one was the bay restoration fee payable account had, had grown over the past years. And we kind of asked Cole to do some digging in that to see why, because radar bay restoration fee payable should just be an in and an out. We collect from town residents and then we remit the funds back to the state. And it was noted that there was, when the, the quarterly reconciliation was being done. Something was being double counted. And so was, it was the, the net effect was hitting this account, which wasn't correct. So Cole did a lot of research and digging and, and these were the adjustments that needed to happen to both water and sewer fund to make that back.
Okay.
To appropriate figure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, so Ms. Willetts, do we need to make a motion to accept the? Audit? So we conclude the presentation at this time? Is that accurate? Okay, any conclusory remarks?
I would just like to thank Cole specifically and the town staff. We did the majority of the audit remotely. For the year, we did come up about a day or so, but Cole was very prepared and had everything to us. So it went very efficiently. Mainly we extended just because we wanted to make sure that they had enough time to review and accept the report. Specifically since there was a finding this year, to make sure we weren't rushed at the end.
Thank you for doing this. We really appreciate it. It seems like we've gone. A great distance from going from the original reports where they were a little bit more profession driven to layman driven. And that's very much appreciated, really truly. Ms. Willetts, quick question for you related to a follow up from the board. Should a board member have a question? In reviewing these documents tonight, should it come to you and you will carry that question forward? Or is it better that we directly contact Ms. Mills and staff? Okay. Terrific. Okay. So everybody has a plan and if they need to follow up on something. Terrific. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Sure. And the only thing I'd like to say is thank you guys for allowing us to come in December. Because we, again, sometimes we're here in March and April, and by then it's so stale that it doesn't have hardly any meaning. So I know Kathy had to pull some strings to get us here tonight, but we just felt it was more appropriate as soon as it got wrapped up to present it to you. So it's fresh. So thank you for accommodating us.
Well, yeah, that and we, you beat the snow this year.
I know.
Snow issues and ice and.
I think one year it was postponed three times because of snow. And then we finally made it in April because there was no chance of snow coming in April. Alright, thank you very much.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, so at this time, we now turn back to our regular agenda to item number two.
You had to make a motion to accept it.
Oh, Mr. No, we, Ms. Willetts?
I think we.
I think it's. Sure. Board member, are we okay? Mr. Ritz, I think this is your guest, so why not?
Well, yeah, I mean, she reached out.
Okay, so with that in mind, Mr. Burns, okay, and. Ms. Roca, we appreciate you following up. We have a timer set. The timer duration is three minutes, four minutes. Okay. So if you could try to frame your comments in that, that would be greatly appreciated. And in the future, we look forward to actually seeing you here in person.
Uh, yes. Can you hear me good?
We can.
Okay. No, thank you so much. I had some technical difficulties earlier. Just trying to get around and just to my different engagements, but. Make it a point to be at the next meeting in January. If I heard correctly earlier, I believe it got moved to January eleventh. But just. For the eighth district here in. The district for the town of Emmitsburg. Just to introduce myself a little bit, I'm an Air Force veteran. I served in Afghanistan in two thousand and seven. I'm a single mom, got two kids. We live in Frederick County. And you know, and I just decided that I want to run because I wanted to do something, do my part in making some change. And speaking to a lot of people, I've been making my way around the, the town, visiting different businesses. And people seem to be excited to have someone, you know, making it up this way. I have a doctorate in business administration. I got my MBA there at the Mount in Emmitsburg. So the town is near indeed in my heart and I just look forward to meeting everyone and just making my way around. If you guys are interested to learning more about me, my website's rocaforcongress.com. Last name is R O C A for congress.com. And again, thank you for just giving me a couple of minutes to speak. And sorry about earlier, just, you know, how sometimes technology can misbehave.
Terrific. Well, thank you again for making the effort and. Mr. Ritz will, I guess, let you follow up regarding next meeting. Is that okay?
Oh, sure. I believe, yeah, she.
Okay.
She was, she heard that, that move. But yes, I'll cer- I'll certainly do that. And I just wanted to throw out there, you know, any, any candidate. It's always great to have any candidate come talk to us.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we don't really get that too much up here in Emmitsburg.
Here in the wilderness.
Yeah. So thank you.
Yeah, no, that's one of the reasons I, I've been telling people, I, I, I feel like even in Frederick, we don't get a lot of love. Especially up in the Emmitsburg area. So yeah, I will definitely, this won't be the last you'll hear from me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Okay, at this time we turn to agenda item two. The mayor's out of the room. Anyone have anything radical? No? Okay. So, all right, let's move forward. Agenda two, agenda item number two. Approval of a stormwater management and water sewer deed of easement with Village Liquors and Plaza Inn. And authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. This will be a presentation by staff.
Okay, thank you. So if I could direct your attention to page thirty three of the agenda package just for. You can see that actual easement. So these are two separate agreements. I'm asking for two separate motions. The first is for a sewer, the sewer and water, and the second is for stormwater management. Long story short, these are needed in order for our crews to have access to those type of facilities on this property. So that's my presentation unless there's questions.
So I'm usually okay with maps and I'm trying to get oriented here. I have Silo Hill Parkway. And I'm trying to determine is.
Duncan right there.
Here to the left.
Yeah, correct.
The sleep in is up here to the right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And you can see as we were talking about the subdivision plan, which we're going to be reviewing, you can actually see that right here. The subdivision line going right down the middle.
Terrific. Okay.
That was my question, Mr. President. I was going to ask pending the planning commission's meeting on Thursday. It doesn't affect this at all.
No, it doesn't.
Should he subdivide? We still have the easement in place, assuming we approve that tonight.
Correct.
We don't have to come back and revisit it and. Look at different maps.
Exactly.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so the stormwater management and water and sewer deed of easement basically allows us access to those in order to. Investigate, repair and anything else.
Exactly. Yeah, there'd be a rain garden in the front there. And then you can see a proposed sewer easement. It's really little writing. And then there's the proposed access easement. The access easement is actually a private matter, which he will handle himself. So.
Okay, terrific. Okay, any other questions for staff related to this item? Okay, so the question therefore is. How would you like us to phrase this as a motion?
I'm sorry.
There are more to this. I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Okay, yes, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Ritz.
Before we continue, the last statement you just stated, the private matter regarding access.
Yes.
Just thinking ahead, is it a foreseeable issue for the town?
No, no. So it's going to be a private driveway in there. If you remember the Village Liquors site plan.
Yes.
And he wanted to do a phase two on this property. However, I'm not sure if that's going to happen. However, this shared driveway is going to make a loop to the next property. So it's going to be a private drive. We don't have to plow it or anything. So that's.
Oh, so we're going in the back like.
Exactly.
Horseshoe back.
Horseshoe.
Near the Silo Hill line.
Yes. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. And regarding your question, President.
I'm, let me, let me back up for a second. Am I jumping the gun? It seems that that's your completely, your presentation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Item. Okay, good. I'm sorry. I thought that's where you were going, but I.
No, that's both.
Yep. Okay, so in order to phrase the motion, if you'd share and.
If you could do approval of the first stormwater management deed of easement with Village Liquors and Plaza Inn and authorized mayor. And then the second one, approval of the water sewer deed of easement and authorized mayor.
Make a motion for the approval of stormwater management for the water deed of easement with Village Liquor and Plaza Inn. And authorize mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
Just the stormwater management.
All right, so just, okay.
Yep.
Make a motion for the approval of stormwater management deed of easement with Village Liquors and Plaza Inn and authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for a consideration.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Are there any further questions from the board? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent.
Now make a motion for the approval of the water and sewer deed of easement with Village Liquor and Plaza Inn and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Right now, Silo Hill Parkway is being used as a parking ride. What's going to happen? I don't know how you're going to, when all this construction stuff starts out there.
Yeah, so for Duncan, so that, say that was step one. When the site plan was approved, the planning commission, we actually removed, we asked them to remove the. Parking area there, they grounded, they grinded the white lines for parking. Same exact thing's going to happen here for Village Liquors. They're going to grind those parking spaces. So no parking is going to be. Yes. That's why we're really pushing for the park and ride.
Yeah, the park and ride, I was going to say that would be, why they ain't going to put down the one, it will be used.
It was, the funding was cut at the state level with COVID, due to COVID. That's what they're telling us. I've, I just followed up with them a month ago about it. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Mr. Sweeney? No, okay, very good. Okay, so at this time, we now turn to agenda item number three.
All right, Amy, can you please put the plat up on the, there we go. Can you zoom in by any chance? Okay, no worries. Okay. It's a clicker.
Mr. Golden, I'm trying to get to the proper page.
This forty seven.
Forty seven. I didn't dog ear it. I'm sorry. I'm usually pretty good about that.
Okay, so the town hired.
Well, let me introduce it just so we have the, the record. So agenda item number three, approval of town of Emmitsburg addition plat for two primary road for consideration. Again, presentation by staff. Thank you.
Yes, yes, of course. The proposed project consists of combining, let's say parcel A, that is nine point five, three, one, four acres. Oh, excuse me. Original area PB eighty seven, one seventy four parcel. That is nine point five, three, one, four acres with parcel A, that is zero point four, eight, seven, four acres. To create a new lot that consists of ten point zero, one, eight, eight acres. This addition plat is required in order for the new pumping station to meet current day zoning setbacks. This was approved by the planning commission. However, since it is town property, the commissioner's also has to approve it. So let's see how this thing works. Okay, so we hired RKNK to do the pump station project during their studies. They found that this is actually two separate lots. The county had this as one large lot, so we thought we were okay regarding setbacks. However, they found during the deed search, there's a tiny little parcel that the pump station is currently located on. So what we're looking to do in order to meet the current day zoning setbacks is to combine the small parcel with the large parcel. Is there any questions?
How does that happen?
You know, it's a really good, really good question because the county is really good and their system is so on point. Where this is just, I have no idea how this happened.
I'll go pure conjecture. Maybe they had to define the parcel for alone related to building that structure. That's is.
That's a possibility.
As opposed to being accountable for the whole ten.
Well, it's interesting because when this was originally subdivided, I think ten years ago. Dan Reiver owned all this property and he gave a lot of property to the town or sold it. I don't know the story. However, that subdivision never included this little parcel. So it's just, it was a mistake made at some point.
Okay, well, with these things in mind. Is there a motion? From the board for this item. I'm sorry, Mr. Ritz. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I have one question. It's, it's more of a parliamentary question. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I voted on this at the planning commission, didn't I? I believe so. I think, I think yes. Okay, so just to be. For all intents, so I'm not looking that I'm double dipping. I, I'm going to abstain from voting this evening because I voted on this particular item at the planning commission. If I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
That's okay. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
I think we'll be okay majority wise. It doesn't matter if I abstain, so.
No, we have a quorum. We're still.
Yeah.
I mean, present. Here we go. Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Burns, is there a?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the town of Emmitsburg's addition plat for two primary road.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Aye. The motion carries three to zero with Commissioner Ritz abstaining and Commissioner Davis not present.
A favor to Ms. Nail as she's taking the minutes. I'm assuming that we can put that in there. The reason why I'm abstaining, I want it to be clear. Yes. And that's my fault. I should have abstained at the planning commission meeting.
This time we turn to agenda item number four on page forty-eight or sixty-four.
Yes, so this goes hand in hand with our last agenda item. Since we are creating a new lot, we are required to create a new deed. So our town attorney created the new deed and we are also required to dedicate road to ourselves. It's kind of a confusing situation. However, for whatever reason, fifty years down the road, we decide to sell the pump station property. This will, we will have this part of the road.
Great, okay. Uh, the item reads approval of a confirmatory road dedication deed for the pump station project located at two Creamery Road and authorize mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. Okay, any further presentation, Mr. Golden? Any further questions for staff related to this item? No? Okay. Mr. Ritz, are you able to participate in this one or?
I think just to go hand in hand, I'll go ahead and abstain from this as well.
Understood. Okay, with that in mind, Mr. Burns or Mr. Sweeney, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the confirmation for road dedication for the deed for the pump station project located on two Creamery Road.
And author.
And authorized by the mayor and signed behind, behind the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? No, I'll second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero with Commissioner Ritz abstaining and Commissioner Davis absent. We now turn to agenda item number five. For the record, dog earred. Okay, this is consideration of approval of a bid to complete a water rate, sewer rate, and tap fee study for consideration. Mr. Briggs, our mayor, alluded to this a little while ago. Staff, return to you.
Yes, thank you. I know we've talked about this in numerous meetings. Mayor Briggs mentioned it, as you see in the audit report. And then USDA did in fact advise us that they could, would be unable to provide us with any additional funding for any water infrastructure projects because our rates cannot sustain the yearly maintenance of what we currently have and would not be able to sustain any future infrastructure projects. Typically, water and sewer rate studies are done every five years, three to five years. To my, that's my knowledge, there has not been a water rate study in fifteen years at the very minimum. I know sewer rates were raised to sustain the wastewater treatment plant project. Those rates were set in-house. There was no independent study done. It's my understanding and some discussions with USDA that there's a possibility that their sewer rates may be able to be lowered to help offset any water rate increases. But with that being said, I reached out to several municipalities to see who's, who have conducted some water rate studies and they were able to provide me some names of some companies. So we did send them the RFPs as well. The timeline you'll see there when it was posted, we had to publish it on the e Maryland marketplace. Bids were due on November thirtieth. Staff opened and reviewed the bids and we published them again on the website, the MML Classifieds, e Maryland Marketplace, Town Facebook page, and we sent, email sent the RFP to two contractors that were recommended by some municipalities. We were lucky to receive three bids and you can see the bids there in alphabetical order. All three bids were, they were all good bids. They were addressed the issues that we were looking for. You'll see New Gen at thirty-five thousand, Baker Tilly at thirty-five thousand, and Smart Utility Management at twenty-five thousand. Staff reviewed all the bids. I'll mention that we sent out reference checks on all three companies. All three companies received favorable reference checks. After reviewing the bids, staff recommends New, New Gen out of Annapolis. They have been used by City of Frederick, Tawnytown, Union Bridge. Frederick County's used them four, four or five times. They came highly recommended by Hagerstown. Spoke to their manager. And their bid packet was outstanding. I think we'll be very happy with the results of their rate study. So again, staff would recommend New Gen Strategies and Solutions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. Okay, so it's been fifteen years since we've had a water rate study completed.
I don't even know if you had one fifteen years ago. That's, I went back as far back fifteen years with no evidence of a study. I don't know when or if one's been done before.
I don't think we had one.
All right, and USDA basically told us your, your, your water rates can't sustain. You're gonna have to increase your water rates. However, we might be able to lower sewer.
Correct. That was their opinion, yes.
But they're not mandating that we actually pony up for a study, correct?
No, no, no. They're not saying you have to do a study, but I believe to get accurate accurate rates based off it, because what you have to look at is your current rates, future rates. We currently have a six, five or six tiered system, which is kind of difficult at times that maybe we can have an easier tiered system for our water rates. You gotta look at all the future prog, projects that we have to do, at least on the water side. It's not something staff feels comfortable doing in-house to do accurate rates.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I'd like, I'm glad you said that. Yeah, that, that helps me. But I do like the idea of looking at those different tiers and maybe making things a lot easier. I know we had some complaints too with you know, single individuals having to pay certain much, much.
Minimums.
Minimum, because the hygiene was determined every so course of time, you know, you really should be using this much water and they, I know one person took offense to that. So, okay. That's ten thousand dollars.
So I'll tell you why we, we did not choose Smart Utility Management.
Thanks.
I'll tell you why. Their bid, they are the cheapest. They didn't really do a good job in their, in their bid packet explaining what their services are, what the town could expect from their services. They have one staff member, which is concerning. Thermont has used them, but only has used them for electric rates.
Okay.
So I didn't really speak to anybody that had utilized them for a water and sewer rate study. We piggyback a lot off of Frederick County, so the fact that they've used them five times, I think that will be beneficial for us in the long run.
Is that why the notes column was empty for them?
Yeah, they didn't break it out.
Okay. And are, even though it's the one person, are they at least close by?
They are an ocean, ocean city. Yes. So New Gen is in Annapolis, Baker Tilly's in Minnesota, and Smart Utilities is an ocean city.
And then part of this, part of this amount, would that be for them to, are they, are they looking remotely? Are they coming here visiting us?
They will come and be present at town meetings.
I'm assuming the Baker Tilly from Minnesota, would, would, would there be an additional fee involved for travel or is that part of their package?
I believe it was part of their package from what we initially read.
All right. Yeah, I mean.
It's good to do local here.
I, I like that too. Yes, I, I agree with that. I mean, part of me feels like, eh, you know, we're showing out money to do this, potentially even raising our rates. Looking, looking at that, but I do like, I do like the idea of looking at those different tiers, making things a little bit make more sense and maybe a little bit more fair across the board.
Yeah, I think that you'll see that, that it might be more equitable across the board.
Maybe, not.
I, and I can speculate in some discussions that I've had. Cole and I have had discussions with, I don't know, it's a, it's a nonprofit water company and they, they had started to take a look at it, but they thought the tiers were too much and that we could make some changes. And then also by looking at our sewer rates and our connection fees. And you know, the recommendation being doing it every three or five years, we're way behind.
Okay. I mean, for the most part, when we vote on these, I think our track record's pretty good. Remember the Rainbow Lake Dam, that, that's a sore subject.
And that one, that, that's a sore subject with me and because I recommended them and they were very small. They only had two people.
Yeah, but it looked good to us too, so.
And it costs us a lot of time and money.
Okay.
So you feel these folks have the resources, they have the expertise, they have the recommendations. So that's part of your background. Your support. The other piece is the USDA, did they provide any recommendations regarding rates or changes like in their research?
No.
Come forward with any?
Apparently that they're not, it's not permitted.
Okay.
It's just discussions that we had had as we were moving forward. Cause I had reached out to USDA about the water clarifier and that's when I was told unfortunately, they could not provide any funding.
Okay.
Is we.
Until we do this, right?
We need to, yeah.
Well, there's no guarantee that they would even fund it too. We could, we could still pay for this and raise our water rates and they can still say, nope, we're not gonna do it.
No, and you're absolutely right. And, and but USDA has always been very good to us. Every time we have applied for funding with USDA, we've gotten it. I can't say the same about MDE. And we'll keep trying with them as well, but we've always had a good relationship with USDA.
So coming back to the USDA and their documentation, is there anything that they can provide to whomever it is that we choose, once that choice is made? Like, do they have any documentation regarding their recommendations that we're allowed access to? Cause if they can't come with a specific.
See, our current, our, our, our favorite consultant is no longer there, so they're kind of in transition. I mean, and it's not only USDA's recommendation. You, you look at the last three to five years audit reports.
Sure.
You know, the water fund in particular has shown a loss for five years. We're fortunate now because we have tap fees, but if that would dry up, we'd be right back where we were. We can't continue to sustain. You know, everything's getting more and more expensive. Maintenance is expensive. Aging infrastructure is failing. It's, it's gotta be done.
It's, it's a common sense decision. I mean, I don't think anyone's.
I mean, it's not any, anything anybody wants to do, but it's, unfortunately, it's a necessity to continue to provide the service.
Correct. Okay, I'm just trying to look for any extra data that can help the process.
Absolutely. And I'm sure once we, we begin working with, with New Gen, they're extremely qualified that they, they may tell us to reach out to USDA or our consultant.
Okay. Staff has made a recommendation for the New Gen Strategies and Solutions. Their amount, their bid is thirty-five thousand dollars based upon seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for water analysis and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for sewer analysis, rate analysis. Is there a motion to accept their bid? So move, okay, motions were made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second for Commissioner Burns's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Okay, the motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent.
Thank you.
Thank you for the research. We turn to agenda item number six, next page fifty-eight or sixty-four. Set sale price for three oh three West Lincoln Avenue for consideration. The presentation will be done by our own Mayor Briggs. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We're, we're following the game plan of our attorney. Write the letter. Last month, we presented the board, excuse me, presented the board that is there a public need for this? And you all said that there are no public needs, so go forward with marketing the property and part of the process of marketing property going to game plan is let's get an appraisal by a certified general commercial appraiser who has experience in the area. And we, and it's also an MAI, which is the highest designation you can get in appraising. And we, and it's the work, work of Michael Pugh, who's officer in Frederick. And he did an appraisal, the date of the appraisal is July first, date of the value. That's his report, the day of the evaluation is May twenty-fourth, as is current market value. The highest and best use in his opinion at that time was childcare, which is the perfect situation there right on the park. As improved, continued use has improved. We have a church there. We have a good relationship with Christ Community Church. Who, who I am, I am talking to under the guidelines of our attorney. The price, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with the extraordinary assumption that the roof, roof is complete. Now, now we could do it or they could, we could deduct it from the price. And they, they could do it. The people, whoever would want to buy it. We do have a roof. The roof is, let me give you a description of that. It's sixteen feet. Roof system is engineered trust membrane covering. And wood frame building, concrete foundation. And the building was built in nineteen ninety-six by the town. And it's situated on forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two square feet or point three, three, eight, five acres of land. That's lot one, platform forty, page one eighty-one. And it's improved with the building, the gross size of six thousand, two hundred and seventy-two square feet. It's in the village zone and the intent use of the appraisal was for possible sale. The client is the Town of Emmitsburg and a duly appointed representative. Mr. Pugh came with a value of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have talked to a Realtor, solicited a commercial Realtor out of Frederick, who has experience up here. I recommend we use Robert Sheets. I, I am a license broker in the state of Maryland, but I have nothing to do with this sale. I've known Bob Sheets for many years. He sold the Shamrock last year to Royal Farms. And he has the Zurgables property up here listed. So he knows our area and he and he's a professional in that sense. He's also a certified general appraiser. So our recommendation right now, I'd like to bring the listing back to you next month. As we got, got down, we, he agreed to the price. We agreed to maybe he would five percent commission out of that. And, and we would reserve the right, exclusive right to work with the present tenant, Christ Community Church. He would not get a commission on that. That's, that would be our, they signed a contract. It's very hard to find somebody who, who'd list with, with the whole, the whole thing like that. And he, he was very kind, kind to do that. But I got down to some things that Leslie wanted and his attorney who wrote his listing agreement didn't want, but he agreed on the price. And so we're, we're still fooling around. I need to bring that back to you, that listing. Or if it may be another firm that may be listing it, but we, she feels we have to go ahead and list this officially to the open public with the firm and with the exclusive right that we could negotiate or sell with the present tenant. I think I went over the highlights, but we, we have the appraisal here that we can get whatever we want. But if you have any questions, so.
Okay, Mr. Burns, you kind of gave me the signal. Yes, sir.
So question for you. I know this was brought to our attention last month and then again this month, but the appraisal was done in May and July.
May.
Okay, so it was done in May. Now it's seven months later. Why not have an appraisal closer to when we're possibly thinking of selling it or things like that? Because obviously the market has changed dramatically during that timeframe.
It was just a matter of timing for us to present it to you. You know, we, you know, we're still coming out of the pandemic, but we, we're.
I, I.
He could, we could get an update and he could probably charge us another, our fee was three thousand dollars. We could probably ask him to come back and update it for fifteen hundred.
I understand, I understand that. With the ever changing market and comps that are changing constantly. You know, there's businesses in Frederick County and I, I don't know what comps you would have up here in this area, except over off of Creamery Court. When his place sold, I don't know what that officially was or anything of that nature and things like that. But you look in Thurmont, the different businesses down there, you know, the comps are constantly changing. It could go up, it could go down dramatically. So I think the only objection that I have of that price right now is that if that price was determined in May and we're sitting here in December, are we losing money, gaining money or things of that nature?
Well, one, one issue is that we have a lease until next October. So the, we're, the good, the upside is you're, you're correct on that valuation could go up. And he did use as a comp that we, we are, as a combination to get the church and occupy a vacant building. Many years ago, we rented it pre-rent and building up at a, at a rental rate that's below market rent. And there is the church out at the, at the, what is it called? Seaton, the office going on the square. You know, at the end of Creamery Road and up. That was a great, a great rental rate to show that discrepancy. But, but what, there is a lease in place and you, we'd have to work that into selling. And I think he took that into consideration that, yeah, this is, I'm appraising it now, but those people have the right to buy the place till October. So that, that worked that way. And, and yeah, you're probably right, but I, I, my business is reviewing commercial appraisals for banks. And I'm not letting anything here, I want to go totally with this, your questions and that. But we could spend fifteen or dollars if you all would, so.
Well, I think the other question becomes is, so we obviously own the property and have since ninety six, what do we owe left on it? We paid off completely?
So. Nothing, we, we had it built, it was occupied, occupied, I think our tenant was Catholic charities. And they had up county there and they, they left the building and it was vacant. And I, I went to Christ Community Church and asked if they'd like lease properly.
Mr. Mayor, I think he's asking, do we owe any money on it?
No, they said zero. No, and so, and I think the last, the last question would be is if we're gonna publicly list this. Is Christ Community Church gonna have first rights or are we gonna have first rights of denial to anybody else? Or is we expect?
We, we, we have the exclusive right to work with them. And it would save us a commission.
But what's stopping somebody to come in and say, hey, we'll give you seven hundred for it right now?
No, we can't. Oh, well, you're right, it doesn't protect.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, like, if it's going into the public market. You know, cause obviously there's been some questions about other properties in town in situations like that where someone's tried to make an offer and things of that nature.
I think the intent, the mayor's intent is to set the sale price, but not list it with this realtor right away. To give the town the ability to negotiate with Pastor Talcutt. And I believe that's the intention. And that's, I think we're both in agreement on that.
Yes, essentially we couldn't, we'd not, we'd not do that.
Pastor John Talcutt, I spoke, I spoke with Pastor John recently too. I know you said you were in communication with him. He's not interested in the property.
Okay, that's good.
They would like to stay in the Emmitsburg area and to build their own church on another piece of property. However, we do still have the, the lease in place until, what did you say? Oh, it was September or October. So that said, even if we list this. You know, then if someone were to buy it, I'm assuming then the lease would still be valid. Until at that point, and then the church, it would be up to the church then to figure out what they'd like to do. I guess the one question I have too, and I, I didn't think about this last time. We as a board decided, you know, we don't need this anymore. We, we don't need this property. Yes, we are renting it out to Christ Community Church. Do we need this? Does the town of Emmitsburg need this for anything else? And you know, we never, we never really.
We, we addressed.
We addressed a little bit, potentially like a parking lot, which I remember once upon a time I was all about parking lot in town. That's, that's down my priority list right now. So my question is, okay, let's say tonight we agree to six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And it gets listed next month or the month after. Do we know? Do we have an idea what we'd like to put that money towards? That's a pretty large chunk of change. We'd like to use it for something. Can we, can we identify that tonight?
What, one suggestion always is to find another property and, and keep it moving there and not get into our general account though. But we do have some calls from, you know, in on infrastructure. You know, we've always talked about that, but we, we have the next tranche coming in on that. But I, I would suggest that we look for maybe acquiring another property like, well, you know, maybe there's a dilapidated property in town, we'd like the.
I'd rather not, unless that's we're going to, unless you're talking about a dilapidated property, what to raise and to put, to put a parking lot.
It'd be up to, it would all come back to you, but the, the idea is don't put it of, of a lot of municipalities, don't put it back into just the general account, put it into another property, that's all.
If I might interject, you can't decide tonight because it's not an agenda item and that would be a votable item.
Right.
So it, it could not be.
Do we have a hunch? Are there any, have there been any discussions, hey, you know, it'd be a really good idea to put it towards this?
At the staff level, I'll be very honest with you, a parking lot is on the staff level is something that we would be very interested in is, is purchasing a lot to build a parking lot because parking lots are extremely expensive. But that's just something from what I've heard complaints for, I've been here ten years, for the last ten years that there's no parking in town. But that's, that's not the staff's decision where the money would go. It would have to be an agenda item that, that the board would then discuss and then vote on where that money would go to.
Well, Mr. Mayor referenced a dilapidated property.
I think he's just, he's just, he's just spitballing.
Okay, so like.
We all have ideas.
Sell one property to buy another.
I'm sure everybody's got ideas.
Landlord business, I mean, I'm kinda like getting out of this.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to get out of the landlord business if possible for the town of Emmitsburg. We, we, we got rid of one forty. Okay, so here's an example, so one forty South Seaton, we, we, we knew we had an interested party. And sure enough, you know, we set that sell price, somebody made an offer, boom, it all, it all happened. That, that was great. So I guess the assumption here is Christ Community Church is the interested party, although they're not.
He has not told me that.
Okay.
Talked to him last night.
All right.
I.
Unless he's changed.
I wouldn't assume that, I, I mean, just assume it's a buyer, but don't assume any particular, unless you're putting someone in a compromised position, but honestly. Like if, if you have discretionary information, you know, don't put somebody in harm's way.
No, no, I, I did. And I know we have experts in the real estate business in the room. Something about this though, it just doesn't, I, I don't feel comfortable, like one forty South Seaton, the sell price. I, I thought, okay, you know, I, I, I think, I think we might get that and we did. I don't know if we're gonna have a lot of people jumping on this property.
So the whole discussions on this started when Pastor John reached out to staff with interest to purchase the property. So that's where this all started. So at one point or another, he did have interest in purchasing it. And that's what got the ball rolling on our end.
Yeah.
If he's no longer interested, I'm not privy to that information. But what happened with one forty is, is we were getting out of the real estate business for that particular property. And we did list it and we did have a bunch of showings for it. And fortunately we got a buyer.
Yeah.
And it worked out great.
It did.
Um, I don't know what the market would be for that property. I would imagine we will have interested parties, but I'm not in the real estate business, so I don't know. But that's where this started was initially with Pastor John's interest in that property. And that's where this all got started.
Mr. Golden, a quick question for you regarding the property itself. In the village zone, that could be a commercial establishment, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Could it be used for light industrial, like light manufacturing?
No.
No, okay. Should it be converted to residential?
Yes.
Okay. Were the building to be torn down? Is there a maximum height of the structure that would stand there?
Yes.
Okay, and that's approximately?
Thirty five.
Thirty five feet? Terrific, okay, and it would have to have the same footprint?
Yeah, so if.
I, I know this is, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm sorry, say it again.
Okay, I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I don't know if it would be the same footprint.
No, if it's raised, it would have to meet current day setbacks and it's gonna be really hard to do that. Oh, yeah, yeah. Could it be used for a town office? I have to look at the zoning, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I just don't know. I know those questions, but I don't know, I don't think so. Okay. Off the top of my head, I think it has to be institutional as what we are in right now. Um, not, but I'd have to check. But zoning can always be changed.
Mr. Ritz, we did decide in the last meeting that we were going to, like, we, we deemed it a non-necessary property.
I know we did.
Okay, so just wanna make sure. Now regarding the hypotheticals of uses, I mean, my thought is we move forward on this soon tonight, I know you're uncomfortable with it. But perhaps two things you might want to consider for a future meeting comeback where you'd like to see the money applied. Or if you have a concern with the process, we, we can still put the brakes on. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not a done deal because there's no deal. Does that make sense? Like it's not on the market yet, we're gonna list it potentially, or rather we're setting a price for it, but we're not putting it on the market. If there's something that you feel is inappropriate or an encumbrance to us, that's my concern. Like if you feel something unethical is happening, that would be another concern, but you haven't said those things yet.
No. How about this? Cause I know, I always like to, I always suggest tabling things and coming to find out I can't, we can't because like time is of the essence. But since we don't have the listing, if we're gonna be looking, discussing with the listing agreement, the agent, technically. I'm assuming next month, hopefully maybe everything will come into place and we will be voting on the listing agreement. Do we have to have a sell price in place before we agree upon a listing, listing?
So Mr. Merrill, turn to you, what's the value of setting of the selling price right now?
The value is that I can finally start talking to Pastor John, who I talked to last night in Garden Way. I've talked to him several times, he's never indicated, he, he did say that he was looking at another piece of property in town. But, you know, I, I suggest that it, it's nice, it's a hard business being a real estate developer.
Okay, so what you're saying is because we have that exclusive agreement to interact with them, that adds a time sensitivity to it to move forward. Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
With the bridge, the little bridge down here taking nine years, it's gonna take a while for, for them to build another church. It's gonna be very hard for them to relocate and try to find a space for their church and get the money for the bill at this time because everything's pushed so far back with all the the building supplies all being withheld. I mean, my, our company has the same problem with getting pipe and stuff like that and, and they will too if they go do. Putting this price down now would, would push or get them a little push on getting them start. We only got to October, so we got less than a year to go, we have to decide whether we're gonna buy this property or, or move, because they're gonna have to move before October or you can't move off.
Right.
In one day.
So you feel that by setting it tonight, then we help move the process forward for everybody?
It'll get them started and he, he'll have to decide in their church group.
Okay.
Now, I imagine they have a committee set up for that stuff and they'll decide whether they're gonna do. And I know church, everybody's denominations are down half.
Participation rate.
The, the participation rate for half the churches, you're not only gonna have the people coming back to church. So their, their money that it's coming in is probably cut in half. So.
I'm still failing to see though, why setting a sell price opens the door for discussion. We are his landlord and he's, he's our tenant, so why can't those discussions still occur?
I think there's an ethical issue because there's no price set. By setting the price, it gives us, us, the town, town government more or less a bargaining position. Okay, if, if, if we're kinda going back and forth in the haggle, this is the first piece of that back and forth on the haggle.
Okay.
The mayor doesn't have the authority to set a price with Pastor John.
No, but. Okay, so. Am I hearing this right? If we, if, if we vote.
What's your ideal situation? Cause I'm trying to understand where you're getting slowed down here, because it, it seems like you're getting at something, but you're not saying.
I don't wanna be locked into this price. I, I don't, I, you know, i- i- if we agree upon it tonight.
Okay.
We can change our mind, right?
Yeah, you set the sale price and then it comes back to you as far as negotiations are concerned.
It could be offered more.
Yeah, when we, when we did one forty.
Seven hundred thousand and then I'm gonna take, we're gonna take seven hundred thousand in Christ Community Church.
It, it's not setting, this is the only price we will make. This is just the starting of the sales process.
What if we?
The haggle.
What if we only get offered four hundred?
Then we don't, we're not obligated to sell it.
No.
And what do we do with it?
Nothing moves forward without the board, nothing. So if somebody comes back at four hundred and the mayor presents it to the board at four hundred and the board says, uh, no or yes, or we will, you know, what we did last time, I believe it was a range that the board set that would be acceptable for one forty. You're not locked into six twenty five.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think this just gets the discussions moving. And I think at some point, we need a definitive answer from Pastor, Pastor Talcutt that yes, he's interested, no, he's not interested. Yes, I'd like to continue to rent for the next five years. We need to know what his intentions are. And that this will allow the mayor to have those conversations with him.
And Mr. Mayor, you can guarantee you'll definitely, if we vote on this tonight, you'll, you'll be in contact with him as soon as possible to set the record straight and to get a clear cut answer from him, is that correct?
Uh, tomorrow morning.
That's all.
Is that soon enough? That's pretty soon enough.
That's good, that's good to hear, thank you.
So with that in mind, is there a motion? Set the sale price as suggested by Mr. Pugh for three oh three West Lincoln Avenue at six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And Ms. Willetts, quickly, will that motion satisfy what we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Subject to the roof being a roof, quality roof being.
That won't be, that won't be determined till it's negotiated at the sale.
And we, we've had a couple of bids put in there, but we'd like to control of bidding a little bit on, on the roof, you know.
This is just to set the sale price.
So we're just setting the sale price at the moment, but there's a contingency you're saying related to the roof?
That'll be for the sale.
And that would be not part of our motion, that'll be down the road. Okay, so with that in mind.
Okay.
Ms. Willetts, as framed, is the motion sufficient for our needs? Or do we need to rephrase it to include the mayor, it looks like?
No, if you set the sale price for three oh three West Lincoln, it, it's six hundred and twenty five thousand. That'll be sufficient for now.
All right, so therefore is there a motion to set the sale price of three oh three West Lincoln Avenue at six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars based upon the appraisal conducted by Mr. Michael P. Pugh?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, is there a second for the motion?
A second.
Motion's by, motion's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion?
Just to thank everybody, I, I just had some questions, I wasn't sure how to phrase, phrase those questions. I, I feel more at ease now, the, the answers that I received, so thank you.
Very welcome. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against? All right, therefore the motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Davis absent. We now turn to our next agenda item on the next page, page fifty nine or sixty four. Agenda item seven. Oh.
Postponed.
It is postponed, so we now turn to our esteemed staff for agenda item number eight, is this also postponed?
That is also postponed at the request of Ms. Mary.
Correct, okay. And now we turn to our esteemed staff for our agenda.
And that one, and then you just note that last one has been removed.
Correct.
It is not a necessary item, it will not be brought back.
Oh, very good, okay.
The five oh two?
No, the last one was.
Page sixty three.
Yeah, the approval of stormwater management deed, we do not need that, so that just been removed.
Yeah, that's, okay.
All right. Um, let me see here. Okay, for January eleventh, Tuesday, January eleventh. For administrative business, I have a proclamation thanking Joyce Rosenstiel for her service to the town of Emmitsburg. Consent agenda. Number one will be appointment of Kevin Hagan as a regular member of the planning commission with a term of. with a term of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to January eighteenth of twenty twenty-seven for consideration. He will be filling, uh, Joyce's seat. Um, I have one. I do not have a name to go along with this one, so I'll just say appointment of a member, uh, a appointment of a person as an alternate to the planning commission with a term of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to June seventh, twenty twenty-six. I believe the mayor is still working on a name. Yeah.
Okay.
Accept resignation of Dr. Bernard Franklin from the planning commission effective December tenth, twenty twenty-one for consideration. This one as well does not have a name as of yet. Appoint a regular point, uh, appointment of a person as a regular member of the planning commission with a term of December tenth, twenty twenty-one to July second of twenty twenty-two. I have then, um, like to back, uh, for administrative item is this will be a discussion item only. It'll be discussion related to the second water meter proposal.
Thank you.
Um, number two.
That relates to the, the lawn watering.
The irrigation.
Yeah, Mr. Jason Vaughn, the email that we received.
Okay, yes. I just want to make sure I'm better language.
Um, number two will be approval of mayor entering into a real estate listing agreement for the purpose of selling through three West Lincoln Avenue for consideration.
That's not the Ritz house, right?
And then, um, my last item will be to set the sale price of the three acres at the wastewater treatment plant for consideration. That's a piece of property that Mr. Mr. Lindsay is interested in. And that's what I have for January.
Can I add an item, please, for, um, I wouldn't see it more administrative business rather than agenda item, but I would like to provide an update on the multi-user trail and the recent recreational trail program grant application.
And, and grant?
Uh, rec, the RTP recreational trail program grant application.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, I don't have an i- item, but I have a question for the mayor and I'm sorry, because this is pertaining to one of the agenda items. Can you hear me? Okay. With, with Dr. Franklin, um, retiring to the mount, going on to another institution. I know he was very instrumental in being like a, a point of contact. If anyone had any concerns, I know he reached out to the community. Um, you know, pleased to let, to let him know, who would, um, who would the, um, point of contact be now?
So, I, Levi S is.
Levi, okay.
Levi S is probably.
Thank you.
Was he Levi's boss?
One more time? No, Bernard was Levi's, like, yeah. Bernard was provost or vice president.
He was vice president and I think Mr.
Levi wasn't the boss of Bernard. It was the other way around.
Yeah, Dr. S is reported to him. I'm assuming he's like in, in interim position to the name. Okay.
Bernard was also on my board.
Yep.
Um, on your committee?
Yes. So I'll have one up this spot.
Okay.
Yeah, we just approved him for the.
Yeah, just coming back when I didn't.
The, um, citizens advisory committee. He was a member there too. So for, for the record, I guess, you know, it's here at the end of the meeting and everybody wants to go. So if, I guess if anyone has any questions or concerns regarding, um, Mount students in town to contact Dr. Levi S's.
Yes.
Of which I don't have his contact information, but at least we, we have it there. So.
Dean of students.
Dean of students. Thank you.
So any other items? All right. Well, it is December. Merry Christmas to all. Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, it has been an interesting twenty twenty-one. And with that, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So move to close the meeting at ten oh eight.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Ho, ho, ho.